Okay. Good morning. Yeah, in accordance with section forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety as amended, this meeting of committee adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment consider applications for the variances from the provisions of the zoning that applies to property and permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses and consent to serve a property to create new lots. And my name is Yim Chan. I will chair today's hearing. And I also like to introduce our panel today. It's Mr. Gary McCain, yes, Sahi Bayat, and also Mr. Peter Wheat. And I, our Deputy Secretary is Nicole Iverna today. And I also would like to acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of Credit, the Enoslabi, the Chibwe, and the Hurisuni, and the Wanda Peoples. And it's now home to many diverse nations, Inuit and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connected, will be connecting with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, and have the options of participating via video or audio only. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. On, when your item is called, you will be, you will, you will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. We ask that you also mute your device until you call to speak. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelists when an item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled, and you will be only visible during your five-minute speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled, and you will be reinstated as attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted according to the written submission deadline. Those participating through WebEx are not allowed to use shared screen or any other panelist control during a video appearance. A host, the host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect this instruction. How to receive a copy of the decision? People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision or committee adjustment on any application must fill out a decision request card. And those participate virtually need to submit a written request for decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address, because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto Local Appeal Body, T-Lab, will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto Local Appeal Body, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal committee adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons, and public bodies such those term are defined in the Planning Act are permitted to appeal decision of the committee adjustment. The appeals instruction are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. Now, I will, without the procedure of the hearing, but I will call each item in the, in the order listed on the agenda. And when, where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the Chair, should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee, and I will comment when you're reaching your five minutes. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. And staff and committee member cannot accept material at their hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. And please remember to confine your remark to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and make a presentation to the committee on the application. And please note, the committee might not entertain revisions to the proposal at the hearing today. The committee might decide to defer the application, if substantially revised, to ensure the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice will form of their changes. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we will call the speakers in the hearing room and then those on WebEx. Committee member may ask questions of each speaker after they finish their presentation. When all the speakers are finished, the applicant or agent has opportunity to rebut only those issues raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The applicant will then be taken into committee for decision. And now I would like to know if any declaration or interest from the staff and from the panel members for the morning session? No? Okay. And I would also like to know whether there's some file to be closed and minutes to be adopted.
Good morning, Madam Chair and panel members. There are no files to be closed or withdrawn this morning. There are deferral requests for this morning session. We have item number five, municipal address of one oh three Malvern Avenue, file number A zero five three one slash two five T E Y. Then we have item number fifteen, municipal address of forty-five to forty-five A Jones Avenue, file number A zero five nine four slash two five T E Y. And lastly, item number seventeen, municipal address of twenty Beaconsfield Avenue, file number A zero five nine seven slash two five T E Y.
Okay, thank you. Before we move on, I did ask whether we have any minutes of meeting for the previous meeting to be adopted?
Yes, through the Chair, we have the minutes from September tenth, twenty twenty-five that are ready for adoption today.
Yes. To, 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 a motion to adopt them? Yes. Yes, and then the second?
Yes.
Okay, it's second by both Mr. McCain and also Mr. Wheat. All in favor?
Okay, sure.
Yeah, all in favor. And that, that's the only one, right? So now, so we deal with the deferral requests?
Madam Chair, for item number five, there are a number of registered speakers. We do not have...
Through you, Madam Chair, there are a number of registered speakers for item number five. We do not have all of the speakers online at the moment. So we, we will hear item five in order today. We can handle item number fifteen, which has no registered speakers, except for the agent.
And the agent is available?
Correct.
Then let's, let's deal with the deferral request for number fifteen. Item number fifteen is forty-five, forty-five A Jones Avenue. This is to legalize and maintain the existing rear two-story addition, including a basement extension below, below with a walkout, and a rear second-floor balcony, which is above the garage, and the north-side exterior staircases. And we, which was constructed without authorized building permit. This addition will be abutting the existing one-story detached osserial building, which is a garage, and will not be accessible through the main portion of the dwelling, and will be, will have a separate, will have separate access to each level. There will be one residential unit on this lot. And we'll receive also a survey site plan for plant elevations, seven photographs of the subject property, and also a cover letter from the agent and a deferral request from the agent of tree protection plan, and also orders to comply. And we receive opposition from, it's no address attached, but from Jeremy Fine. Let's have the agent and tell us why he requesting a deferral, please.
Binaka, you've unmuted.
I'm applicant from R and R Designs. So, like...
Hi, sorry, agent, through the Chair, can you speak up loud? We can't hear you.
Hi, Dell, can you hear me?
Yes. Not well, but can you speak into, closer to your mic, maybe? Yeah.
Yes. Hi, myself, Binaka, I'm presenting, yeah, thank you. I'm presenting the scenario for this project as an applicant from the R and R Designs. Actually, the deferral is like, it's maybe we, like the zoning examiner, he didn't mention earlier, and then later on, the committee come up with this stuff. And then we asked to the zoning examiner, but he provided the revised zoning notice with this command, the, the fifth command, two days ago. So that's why we have to ask for the deferral, because I reach out to him a lot of time, but he didn't provide it me, so that's why, that is the issue, that we have to go with the deferral for the point number five.
Yeah, just simply you didn't get enough time, and there's some revisions on the variances, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
And through the Chair, to the agent, can you kindly state your name and address again, since the audio was not providing you clearly at the beginning?
Okay, myself, Binaka, from R and R Designs.
Thank you.
Okay, you look at that. Is that your first name or last name? Can you give us also?
My, yeah, so my first name is Binaka Patel. Actually, Richie Khan is going to be attend the meeting, but unfortunately, he, he's stuck in somewhere, so he can't attend the meeting. So I mostly can, like, communicate with the committee regarding this project, so I'm, I'm attending.
Need to for a record. Thank you very much, yes.
No problem, thank you.
So, so I think that is actually a good reason is automatic defer. Mr. Wheat, please.
Thanks, Chair, yeah. I, I understand we need to, this is an automatic deferral, because a new variance has been identified, so I move that we defer the item.
Okay. Second, Mr. Bayat, second. All in favor for deferral?
Yes.
Thank you, it's deferred unanimously, thank you. And then the, the, with one more request, is number seventeen, right? Seven, item seventeen is twenty Beaconsfield Avenue. This is to permit a rear grand foredeck and a rear walkway, and an inground swimming pool, which is like swim spa, of the alter two-and-half-story detached dwelling, and new two-story osserial building containing a lymbeysuit, and which is currently under construction under a building permit, twenty twenty seventeen oh nine, one-six building permit. And we also receive a survey site plan for plant and elevation, six photographs of trees, and a cover letter from the agent, a decision affecting the subject property, and a deferral request from the agent. And staff report on the, from Urban Forestry and, and advisory report from, also from Urban Forestry. We also receive support from twenty-five North Coast Avenue, and also opposition from, to no address provider, but someone, Michael Hoffman, and also eighteen, number eighteen Beaconsfield Avenue. And do we have more, just the speaker?
It's through you, Madam Chair, we have the agent and a speaker in opposition.
Okay. Okay, so let's have the, let's deal with the deferral request first, and that's why we moved this item up. Can we have the agent? Tell us why you requested the deferral.
Chair, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Good morning, Chair, committee members. My name is Michael Plummer, three twenty-one Carlaw Avenue.
Yes.
Um, yeah, we're requesting the deferral, because we heard from Urban Forestry Friday last week, and they were recommending refusal. We didn't feel like we had enough time to modify the design and increase the soft landscaping to permit a second private tree. So we just request deferral to have more time to do that, obtain a new zoning review, and notify the neighbors again.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we actually read the correspondence, that's the, that's the issue still. Do we have the next speaker? And please, is he in person? Or, or, it's online?
Randall, you've unmuted.
Hello?
Randall Kerr, you've been unmuted.
Randall, can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Oh, now we can hear you.
I'm not unmuted.
Yes. Oh, okay. You heard the, the requests for deferral, right? We, we will just deal with that issue. Just tell us whether you agree or you disagree. Oh, by the way, give us your first and last name and your address for record first, please. Yeah. Oh, is he being unmuted again?
Okay, it says the host is unmuted. Okay, so I'm seeing that I'm unmuted now, you can hear me now?
Oh, yes, yes, okay.
Okay, so Randy Kerr, Randall Kerr, eighteen Beaconsfield Avenue. I think the file definitely needs more work, and yeah, I would agree with the deferral, because we want to get it right.
Oh, good.
It's been three years and seven months of construction. I'd like to get this project done correctly.
Okay, yes, yes, they seem to have some, they want to meet with Forest Street Department. So you agree with the deferral? Okay, thank you very much, yes. All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, so now we're back into the committee. Yeah, Mr. McCain, yes, please.
I think there are good reasons here, so I'm going to move that we defer this application to a future meeting of Committee of Adjustment for T E Y.
Okay, and second?
I'll second that, Chair.
Yeah, me, the Bayat, second. All in favor for deferral unanimously? It's deferred, thank you, yeah. So we, we done with all the deferral requests, and then we're going to go back to item number one. Yes. For item number one, we, it's ninety-one DeForest Road. This is to alter, this is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear second-story addition as a candidate for at the south portion of the dwelling with rear Juliet balcony. We receive a survey site plan for plants and elevations, nine photographs of the subject property, and a decision affecting the subject property. We also receive correspondence from, from eighty-seven and ninety-three DeForest Road, and also nine signature petition in support from owners on DeForest Road is ninety-two, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-nine, and also three oh seven, three eleven, three thirteen from Windermere Avenue. We receive opposition from eighty-nine DeForest Road, and also from the Swansea Area Rate Payers Association. And that's the whole thing that we receive. And yes, please, yeah, state your name.
My name is Simon West.
Yes, I am.
J N W Architecture, I'm the designer for this project. My address is three eight two Indian Grove.
So do, do we have other speakers?
Through the Chair, yes, we have registered speakers for this item.
So they are in oppositions, I, I guess, contested advocate. So you have to give us a five-minute maximum presentation, please, yeah.
So my client wishes to build a rear one-story addition above the existing one-story addition that was built about fifteen to twenty years ago on the back of this house. The house is a two-story building. We are not over in length, we're not over in height. We're asking for two variances. One's a density increase from zero point six nine to zero point seven seven, and the other one is a side yard setback for only the eaves of the roof. And that's the important part here. So the eaves of, the eaves of the roof, they have to be zero point three meters setback from the side yard. Currently, when you add the eve, as well as the actual gutter itself, it ends up being zero point zero five meters setback from the property. The proposal is one point six nine meters shorter than what's, what I could actually build. So I've actually designed this project actually shorter, because the clients themselves, they want to have more sun in the backyard as well. Now, the street, the house is orientated, so it's sort of north-south. The street goes east-west. The sun sets behind me to the right.
Oh, so, yeah.
And currently, the existing houses, plus the trees themselves, which are on the house to the west, there's a massive tree in the front, a massive tree in the back, they block most of the sunlight coming into any of the rear yards anyway. They, the neighbor to the west is the complainer. They have some, some issues regarding sunlight, privacy, which I can address. Currently, their house is a three-story home. Ours is a two-story home. So their house is fully three-quarters higher, as far as a floor level, higher than our, our proposal. We, we feel as though this is a good project. It's not overbuilt, like the Swansea Rate Payers seem to think. And it's in keeping with what's happening within the existing neighborhood already regarding additions. So we think it meets all the four tests. We don't really think that it has any issues with the four tests. There is only one big issue, and the big issue is, my, my client and my next-door neighbor do not get along very well. In actual fact, there was an order written by the City of Toronto against the client next door, my neighbor next door, to remove their deck, which they, or previous owners, had attached to my client's house, where it actually went over the property line and was bolted into the side of my, my client's house. My client asked them to remove it, and nothing happened. So an order to comply was written by the City of Toronto to the client. My client hired a lawyer, spent a lot of time trying to resolve this situation. And to be honest with you, it's probably created a lot of bad blood between the, between the two neighbors.
Got it. Thank, thank you. Any question to this speaker? We, yeah, we can go back to him anyway, yes. So, thank you, that's why we are going to hear the opposition now.
Through you, Madam Chair, we actually have someone here in person, so we can hear from them first.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning, yes.
Although we know who you are, but please give us your name and address for a record.
Yes. Nicholas Singh, Swansea Area Rate Payers. For the technician on screen, I, I will need the City of Toronto map that we submitted, the side view and aerial view.
Do you want to bring the material up before we start counting the time, or?
Well, I will, I will refer to those during, so I just wanted to be sure we're ready. I can stick to my five minutes. Okay, so, good morning. My presentations usually focus on just one test, because if a variance fails to meet just one of the four tests, then as per section forty-five of the Planning Act, that variance cannot be approved. As usual, the most compelling feature of nearly all applications that come before this committee is the test for maintaining the purpose and the intent of the official plan. This application conforms to that. There's been no attempt by the applicant to properly delineate the broader and immediate contexts that are required to assess the application under the official plan, policy four point one point five, and which would be necessary to show that this application passes the test of the official plan. My written submission speaks to that. However, it's also my experience that the committee invests a large amount of its decision-making in the test for being minor. At times, this committee has recognized that in determining if a variance is minor, the main factor is impact, not size of the variance. On the other hand, I've also heard the committee members opine that the variance is very small, or that the difference between as-of-right and the proposed variance isn't much, and therefore, they support approval. I don't know which of you the committee is going to take today, but I believe there's a case to be made that the impact of these two variances is great and should not be viewed as minor. To make that case, it's necessary to understand the context of the neighboring properties that surround number eighty-nine DeForest Road. So could I get on screen, please, the City of Toronto, it's up there already? Great, thank you. So this slide shows number eighty-nine DeForest. It's a half of a semi-detached building at the corner of Lavinia Avenue and DeForest. It's a very narrow property. It's sandwiched between number eighty-nine and the applicant's building at number ninety-one. So the pictures provided by the applicant number two and number eight demonstrate the grade drop between the properties, and that's affecting the way that the shadows work also. So I point out that this map doesn't show the building extension at number eighty-seven. The next one does, please. The side view of eighty-seven DeForest Road. Can I get the side view? There we are. This slide shows the extension and explains the impact it has on number eighty-nine. Please note that the deck is surrounded by privacy screenings in the form of a faux roof and provides little privacy for the neighbors affected by it. Could we go to the aerial view, please? This slide shows the layout of the three buildings. Please note that this photo is a morning view with the sun rising from the right, and please note the amount of shadow on number eighty-nine. Please note also, the building at the bottom of the photo, this is number eighty-nine Lavinia, and it presents a towering wall to the rear yards of DeForest. Please take a look at the applicant's photo number five for a view of this wall. Please keep in mind that number eighty-nine DeForest, there is no separation with the semi on the east, and the proposal to extend the second story on the west would put a new second-story wall within ten inches of number eighty-nine's west property line. This means that the rear of number eighty-nine will be well and truly boxed in, and the shadow cast from both sides will be severe throughout most of the year. So I submit to the committee that when the neighbor at number eighty-nine says that the impact of extending the second story will be to provide, provide, deprive him and his family of sunlight, privacy, and enjoyment of their property, this deprivation is not minor. This property is already compromised, and every little bit of what they have left counts for a lot. The Swansea Area Rate Payers are of the opinion that the proposed impact on number eighty-nine DeForest will be severe and should not be considered minor. We'd like to see the second-story addition step back from the property line, and we believe that maintaining the as-of-right F S I and setback will provide a measure of relief from the impact that would otherwise be imposed by the approval of these variances. We also maintain that the applicant has failed to show that the application passes the test for maintaining the intent and purpose of the official plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions to this speaker? No, we don't have any questions for, for you. Thank you. We'll, we'll invite back the applicant, please. Oh, there's more speakers? I'm so sorry. I, I thought there was only, yeah. Oh, okay, so you're not in the, okay.
Hi, this is Colin Asselstein from eighty-nine DeForest Road. Can you hear me?
Yes, yeah, we can hear you.
Sorry, can you repeat your name and address, please?
Colin Asselstein, eighty-nine DeForest Road.
Okay, thank you. So you have, you have to tell us your, your comment. You have five minutes. Please, start now, yeah.
Okay, so thank you to the Swansea Rate Payers Association. Articulated some of the issues very well. I'm here to talk about the four statutory tests of the Planning Act and how they are not met in the circumstances, and how these variances, in fact, are not minor. The F S I increase to point seven seven is material intensification that changes the building scale and the pattern of massing on this block. It's not keeping with the official plan of the zoning intent, which is there to protect, to preserve sunlight, privacy, and separation. These variances undermine these objectives of the plan significantly. There are pretty major undesirable development impacts, in my view, as articulated very well by the Swansea Rate Payers Association. The sunlight loss to my backyard is quite significant. The additional block and the afternoon and evening sun on my backyard and deck and my basement windows will significantly reduce the amount of sunlight that is available, reducing it by two or three hours, depending on the time of year. It will significantly impact my enjoyment specifically in the hours of the evening around dinnertime when the additional structural block what little sunlight is available to my backyard. The Juliet balcony also will directly overlook into my yard, creating a reduction in privacy as well. I'd also like to point out that I have some structural safety concerns. I just want to make sure that they're addressed. The basement was previously excavated or underpinned. I think that was in twenty-twenty-one. I did not see any permits that were posted for that and not sure if an inspection was done. Some concern that the additional structure may not be properly supported and would request that an engineering report be underperformed before, I'm sorry, to confirm that underpinning structure and basement excavation were completed to code and that existing structure can support the additional procedure if we are to approve this. In conclusion, the required variances do not meet the four tests, and I respectfully ask the committee to refuse the application. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions? We do not have any questions, so we... Are there speakers? Okay, that's all the speakers in opposition. Yeah, please, the applicant back. Yeah, so you will have five minutes to rebut the issues raised, but we also might have questions for you, okay? Just let us know when you're ready. We won't start counting.
So I'd like to deal with the first letter, which has to do...
Can you speak into the mic so we can all hear you?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, better, much better, yeah.
I'd like to deal with the first letter, which has to do with the next-door neighbor. The wall that has been created regarding the second-floor addition is as-of-right. I'm allowed to put that there. The issue is that I've got a small overhang in the zero-point-three-meter setback. Now, is there any chance you can bring up a photograph, the last photograph that I submitted to the council? It's photograph nine, I believe. This shows... Yeah, just scroll all the way down, please. Okay, stop. So this shows the neighbor to the left, which is eighty-nine, the three-story home. Then it also shows my client's house, which is the two-story home. You'll notice that in between the two houses, there is about two-foot distance.
Little gap, yeah.
So it's twelve inches and twelve inches. They have an overhang, which is, even if it's only six inches, has a gutter on it. So as far as character is concerned, the character of my house with the overhang and the character of their house is exactly the same. So that's why I didn't believe it would be too much of an issue recreating that same scenario, because they already have it. So in theory, why can't my client have it? It sort of goes towards the character of the neighborhood. It doesn't show something that's not been done in the neighborhood. Initially, my client wanted to do a third story on the house. The GFA would have been too high. I knew as-of-right, I could add the second-story addition over the existing one-story addition and still be as-of-right other than the overhang and a small increase in the GFA. Regarding the sun, if you look on the street from the west to the east, which is the forest, my client is at the bottom of the street. It slopes up quite gradually towards the west, so...
Oh, I see.
The houses and where the sun sets is behind us. So all of these houses, as far as their rear yards, always have a certain amount of problem with sun, which is one of the reasons why I also shortened the building already anyway. I could have gone a further one-point-six-nine meters and still been as-of-right. I chose not to move the house further into the back. I chose not to set back the side yard because I was as-of-right. Really, the only issue here is the overhang. Even if I moved the house back twelve inches, I don't really believe with the overhang that it would actually save additional sunlight. So that's why I went with the design that I went with. As far as the four tests are concerned, I believe this is minor in respect to what is typically done with additions on houses within this neighborhood. And the fact that the neighbor next door has a third story, which they went to Committee of Adjustments to do that, and now they're saying that we can't do what we're doing, but they've been able to do what they did. Now, the original client who's living there now didn't actually create that third story. That was the client from before, two clients from before. But the fact that they have a three-story house and they're complaining about lack of sunlight in the back of their yard sort of doesn't really sit right with me. It doesn't seem very truthful. Now, Mr. Singh brought up two photographs. One was a photograph of the side of the house at DeForest and Lavinia. What that photograph doesn't show is it doesn't... Two thousand and nine, it doesn't show an update, and the update is the larger house that's on the south side of this property, which is also three stories. They have windows overlooking into the backyards of my client and eighty-nine. So privacy is somewhat compromised. Now, I placed a Juliet balcony on the back of this house. The Juliet balcony doesn't actually have space where you can walk out. It's just a larger window system. So even if I put a shorter window in there as opposed to a taller window, you'd still be able to see out the window. So I didn't place a balcony which you could walk out from. I just placed a Juliet balcony which allowed more sunlight to come in and more fresh air to come in to the rear of the house, which actually has become a third bedroom to the house.
Thank you. Your time's up. But do you have any question? I have one single question, only to respond to one of the... I think from eighty-nine. He did mention about the FSI you have asked, as he said that is sort of like our character on the block. Do you have other wise evidence to speak on that?
Well, just looking at the house to the left, which is eighty-nine, and looking at the house to the rear, my client signed for both of those Committee of Adjustments so that they could go to Committee of Adjustments and have their houses built. I don't actually have the proof of evidence, but I know from my experience, having an FSI of zero-point-seven-seven is well within the means of Committee of Adjustments to pass that.
That's fine. Because he raised that issue, so I want you to address to that point. Yeah, that's fine. I... That's enough evidence. Okay. So do we have any more questions? Yes, please. Yeah.
Yes, just with respect to the roof eaves, the variance brings it very, very close to the lot line. And what we often see here when that happens, there are issues about being able to maintain eaves, things like that. Sometimes there's a need to go on a neighbor's property. So you've got no ability to move it back a bit because it's where we're at, zero-point-zero-five meters from the side lot line.
Correct.
Can you move it back?
Can I move the...
Eaves back? Yeah.
Well, currently, the overhang is six inches. So that really is enough to get adequate air supply into the attic space, and then the gutter itself creates the zero-point-zero-five. So moving it back, my client still has access to the side of land down there because there's a right-of-way. So I feel as though he still has access using a ladder plus a hosepipe which has got those bends on it where you clean the gutters out. So I don't really feel as though that's too much of an issue. And that issue already exists on my neighbor's house as it is anyway.
Yeah. It's point zero-five is from the property line, so in between the house, there's still some space.
Yep.
Yeah. I think the existing eaves probably is still some distance, and there is a second floor. The neighbors in the first floor, maybe they don't meet, so there may be enough room for maintenance. I assume. I'm not... I'm just reading from the drawings. Okay. Any other questions?
Yes, that's true.
Okay, we do not have any question. Now we're in committee.
Thank you for your time.
Let's... Mr. Beyer, please, yeah.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, we've got before us two variances that we have to focus on.
Yes, yes.
And both of those, in my opinion, are minor.
Yeah.
It's not unusual for us to see, especially in the city and the TUI context, eaves, the overhang issue with eaves and, you know, being closer. The second-floor addition, we see that all the time, and as the agent has indicated, as-of-right, put it up. I find it a little disingenuous when you've got a giant house next door, that the complaints are, to my mind, somewhat frivolous. So I think this is a very acceptable application, and it's a very supportable one.
Okay.
So I have no concerns about this particular application.
Okay. Okay, anyone wants to have comment? Yeah, I do agree with your analysis, and also I haven't heard anything that they say that it is an impact created by the new, the eve projection, but a lot of it is already existing. They have to deal with that situation anyway. He's extending it a little bit further, and I do not see the increase in impact. I mean, the impact's already there because of a lot of houses these days in downtown core, aware we're close to each other, and then I think the neighbors have to deal with it together. So are you going to put a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to put forward a motion to approve this application without any conditions.
Yeah, anyone who's second?
I'll second that, Chair.
Mr. is second, and all in favor? It's unanimously approved. Thank you very much. With no conditions. Yeah, thank you. And now we can move to item number two. Oh, I can... It's one-twenty-four Logan Avenue. This is to alter the existing lawfully non-conforming use, one-story, non-residential building, which contains a workshop and offices. By constructing a new rear one-story addition with a garage door and a rear rooftop patio, which will be accessible from the mentioning floor, also to permit an office use and art studio use within this building, we receive a survey, site plan for plans and elevations, two photographs of the property, and also we receive comments from development engineering and advisory staff report from MetroLinks. We have received a letter of concern from ninety-four Logan, and there's another letter of concern with no address attached is from Mr. Tamara Carvalho. That's all we have received. We have the agent or applicant, please.
Through you, Madam Chair. We have the agent online and no other speakers.
There's no other speakers?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, good morning, committee. My name is Peter Druzek. I'm with Arc Design Group Development Services, Inc., and I am the agent for one-twenty-four Logan Avenue, Inc.
Okay. Because no one will speak in opposition to this application, but we receive a letter of opposition from ninety-four. Can you briefly address that? And then I do not think whether we... I'm going to ask the panel whether they want a presentation.
No presentation.
No presentation. But can you just briefly address to opposition ninety-four Logan's Avenue, please?
Yeah, I've read it from ninety-four Logan, the issues here. In essence, this project is an existing building at the back, and the back half has a lean-to roof, and we just want to rebuild the wall so it lines up with the entire building itself. So these variances for front yard setback and rear yard setback, they're all existing buildings. All we're doing is lifting up the roof on the existing building, and because it is a new wall where the existing wall is, that we have to bring it to compliance. My client is actually developing this for their own use. They do art studio work at home as a hobby, and they want to spread it out in this location here. In addition, as they run a home-based business, they want to do some office work in there as well. In dealing with the city, these are some of the requests here. On the other issue, on the concern regarding the green space, I know there was a concern about green space. My client actually, because of this new roof, we are designing it where they're hoping to make it more of a garden-type of green roof as well, to allow it to allow some vegetation to grow on the property. It used to be an industrial building where someone was doing auto repairs in the past or auto detailing. They bought it, and now it's all contained on the inside for them to use as personal use.
Okay, thank you. Understand, because it's a lawful non-conforming use, any kind of extension, you have to come to us anyway. Why?
Correct, correct. The back addition was a little bit disintegrating, and we want to rebuild it and line it up with the existing roof, and that ended up triggering to bring the existing walls into compliance with Committee of Adjustment.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, any question to this... Yes, we have some questions.
Hi, good morning. I just wanted to ask quickly. I did highlight variance number six with the side yard setback, but you did mention that are all of the variances existing?
Correct. For the buildings, yeah, for the... Yeah, the existing... We're just replacing the existing walls. By taking it down and replacing it, it's now triggering the Committee of Adjustment.
Thank you.
The back half is a wood wall. The rest of the building's block, and we want to keep it all consistent with block and a new roof. We're actually going to take down the old factory roof and put proper structural roof on it.
Thank you. And I did note that the new roof structure, you do have a privacy fence or screen on the... I imagine it's a south side? Yeah, on the south side. So that's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, okay. Yeah, we are in committee. Before we do that, I just want to mention that we received some advisory comment from MetroLinks, comment two and three. You can go through them yourself, there's some advisory comment. Okay, let's discuss this. We are in committee now. Okay.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I think this is extremely reasonable. It's basically just improving structurally what's there, and so I think there'll be no new impacts on the neighbors, and particularly the neighbor to the north, I guess, is basically a sheer wall, that whole lot wrapping around it. So I can see no negatives to approving this continuation of a lawfully conforming use. So I'm going to move approval without condition.
Mr. Beyer?
I'll second that, Chair.
Second, all in favor? No conditions? All in favor? unanimously approved. Thank you very much. Yeah. Now, we are on item number three. It's fifty-seventy Cambridge Avenue. This is to alter the existing twenty-two-story apartment building and by converting an existing ground-floor lounge into an additional residential dwelling unit. There will be a total of two-hundred-and-seventy-six residential dwelling units within this apartment building. We have received a survey, site plan for plan elevations, a total of one-hundred-and-forty-nine photographs of the property and cover letter from the agent and also TRCA permit, record of the permit, copy of the site-specific zoning bylaw. We also received comments from MetroLinks as also the within nature feature protections we received from... we have received from development planning and also the TRCA. We have got a letter of concern from 77 Cambridge and also from 70 Cambridge Avenue. We have opposition, uh, letter from 70 Cambridge, uh, both are from, uh, from, from, from another one is from 70 Cambridge by unit 433. And that's all we have, uh, mat, all the material we have, have, we are ready for the agent or the applicant, please.
To you, Madam Chair, we have the agent online and no other speakers.
Okay. Okay, we are ready, you, you can unmute the agent, yeah.
Gordon, you're, you've unmuted? Gordon, can you hear us?
Are they showing up there?
Yes, it's online.
Gordon, it shows that you're here, can you hear us online? Through you, Madam Chair, perhaps we circle back to this item since, uh, the agent cannot connect, it appears.
Exactly, uh, so, yeah, we, we can do that. And then, well, let's move on to, uh, item number four. And, uh, item number four is 141 Pine Wood Avenue. The purpose is to construct a new two-story detached auxiliary building, which can, will contain a garden suite in the rear yard. The second story will be cantilevered, this existing two-story detached dwelling will be maintained and unaltered. There will be a total of two residential dwelling units on this lot. One in the main building and also the other one is in the auxiliary building. The existing one-story detached auxiliary building, the garage will be demolished. We receive a survey site plan, four plan and elevations, a revised site plan, uh, four plans and elevations. We receive a red line public notice and four photographs of the property and a cover letter from the agent. We receive comment from, uh, Urban Forestry and also we receive support from, uh, 143, 148 Pine Wood Avenue and 51, uh, 501 Washington Road and 407 and, uh, uh, Washington Ho, uh, Road and also 130 and 139 Pine Wood Avenue. Yeah. That's all the material, we are ready for the agent.
And through the Chair, I'll just state for the record that originally Urban Forestry had submitted a memo of correspondence recommending condition number four, which is actually a deferral of the application. However, Urban Forestry staff have since confirmed that that was an error and they are seeking condition number one, uh, from Urban Forestry and if staff can please, uh, pull that up from the late materials or extra late materials, just to show on the screen that Urban Forestry has confirmed they're seeking condition number one. And meanwhile, we will get the agent online, thank you.
Supplemental material, yeah.
Good morning.
Hi.
My name is Graham Asquith, I'm with Assembly Corp., our address is 123 Front Street West.
Thank you. Uh, just wait, wait a second, because we're bringing up some material, uh, from, uh, the memo from Urban Forestry.
Of course, thank you.
Yeah, so we are all, uh, ready to go. Um, so do, do we have any other speakers on this item?
To you, Madam Chair, we don't have any, uh, no other registered speakers for this item.
Okay, yeah, we do not have any opposition, so, uh, uh, let, let me check, do you, please? Oh, yeah, we have, uh, you, uh, that's what I was going to do, just to speak, my, my. Yeah, you do have some revisions on a variance, can you go through those revision with us, uh, I, uh, uh, first? And let's get that done, clearly noted first, please, yeah.
Of course, thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, um, we have revised our plans through consultation with city planning staff, um, which is reflected in this red line notice. Uh, the, the biggest change is we've removed variance number four for the bike parking. Um, this is easy to accommodate on-site and just was not included when we submitted for our zoning review. Um, we are happy to provide the two required spaces on-site, so the, the variance is no longer required and is reflected on the revised plans as well. Um, the other, uh, revision is that we have revised the eastern side yard setback um, to be point four five meters as opposed to the original point one two. Um, and this was done in consultation with city staff, um, to create a, a, a higher quality site plan. Um, one minor correction as well, just on variance number three. Uh, the zoning examiner had identified that there was, um, windows or openings on the north, um, side of the building. That is not accurate and there are no openings or windows on that side, so just a revision to the, the variance number requested, but not the variance itself, is still the point five five meters from the side.
Thank you, yes, that, that's right. So, um, we, we have them all recorded that, right? All right, so, uh, do you require any more presentation? We do not need any presentation from you, but do you want to address anything that particularly you want to address the panel before we move into discussion?
Thank you, Madam Chair, as there's no opposition, I'll keep it brief. I think, um, the main intent for these variances is to be able to provide a high-quality, uh, living space for future tenants, um, as well as maintaining a high-quality, um, rear yard for our client who has two young children and, and uses that space for their family. Um, although the, the lot itself has some constraints, if we were to build as of right, it would constrain the, the building itself, given that there's two large mature trees on the site, which we do not want to remove or injure significantly. Um, and as a corner lot, although there is variances for side yard setbacks, the true distance between the right-of-way, um, and the building itself as proposed is much larger than the distance between the lot line, um, and the building itself.
Yes, yeah, thank you. Any question, yes, we do have question, yeah.
Uh, I wonder if you, you'd be okay with, uh, us tying the, uh, this, this application to the revised site plan?
Yes, the, no, no issue from our end on that.
Thank you.
The, the revised site plan, right?
The revised site plan.
Okay. Any other question, please? Okay, we are in committee now.
Uh, maybe I'll, I'll, I'll take this on, uh, Chair, I think this is a very straightforward one and particularly with the, uh, the amendments that have been made, it makes it much more palatable.
Yes, yes.
Um, so I have no concerns about this particular application. There's only one, um, condition and that's forestry number one.
And two, and you, you just mentioned yourself, um, tied to this.
And, and that we tied to, uh, the revised site plan.
Yes. And as amended, right?
As amended.
Okay. Uh, well, one, who wants to second, Mr. McKay second?
Yeah.
And all in favor of amended agenda? All in favor, approve unanimously, thank you. Uh, okay, now, uh...
Through you, Madam Chair, we can circle, yeah, back to item three. The agent is online, hopefully they've fixed the tech issues on their end.
Yeah, I, I have already read the purpose of this application, so let's have the agent, yeah, please.
Mr. Gordon Griffiths, you've been unmuted. Mr. Griffith, you may have to try a different device or try phoning in or a different computer device. Okay, Mr. Griffith, this is the second time, uh, we've tried to reach you, so we will have to stand on this item to the end and proceed with the rest of the morning agenda. So, Mr. Griffith, we will stand down this item until the end of the morning agenda. Please, uh, try to correct the tech issue on your end, thank you.
So, uh, is item number five being deferred, yeah? Okay, now we...
No, no, we have to hear item five.
Oh, we have, oh, sorry, it's not deferred, okay, that's what I, I, I...
Through you, Madam Chair, item five is requesting a deferral and we have a number of registered speakers.
Oh, I see, okay. So, uh, item number five is 103 Malvern Avenue. This is to construct a new two-story detached auxiliary building, which will contain two garden suite in the rear yard of the property. A copy, we have received a copy of the survey, site plan for plan elevation, total five photographs of the, uh, uh, property and also cover letter from, uh, uh, from the agent and also a deferral request from the agent. We receive oppositions from quite a few numbers of, uh, addresses from Malvern is 101 99, 104, 105, 106, 7, 8 and 110, 116. And, uh, and also 85, uh, we, uh, we also receive from 134 Hen, Henford Street and, um, 121, 22 and 120 from Henford Street. And, uh, okay, welcome. So, get a, give us your, uh, first and last name and then your address, for the record, yeah. Yes. So, uh, which, uh, do, do you want to talk, uh, tell us what the, uh, the deferral, uh, request is?
Yes, yes, um, we're requesting a deferral because we've received a series of comments from the neighbors and, uh, we'd like to explore some changes to the proposal in an effort to address these comments and improve the design of the garden suite where possible. Um, we'd also like to take some time to engage further with the neighbors and, um, try to address some of their comments and concerns that they've raised in those, uh, in those letters.
Okay, so, um, let, let's deal with the request, uh, request first because there's some, uh, people will want to speak to that, yeah. Let's have the first speaker.
Through the Chair, to the audience, whoever here is in person to speak. Yes, we have people here in person to speak, uh, could you please come up to the front?
Okay. So, you, you understand, we're only going to deal with the, uh, deferral request first. Just tell us, uh, yeah, whether you agree or you don't agree, but give us your name and address.
Yeah, I want to, uh, sure, my name is Joshua Arthurs, I live at 101 Malvern.
101, okay.
Um, and yes, I, I'm going to speak about the, the deferral request and some, and our position on it.
Yes.
Um, thank you. So, thank you, um, uh, I am speaking on behalf of neighbors on Malvern and Henford Avenues who oppose the, uh, proposed variances, um, uh, which are presented as, as minor but are in our view major.
Yes.
Um, uh, for a laneway house at 103 Malvern. Um, we've enumerated many of our issues in the supporting materials, uh, that we submitted. Our, our concerns include but are not limited to congestion in the narrow unassigned unpaved laneway shared by 99, 101 and 103 Malvern that would result from a large two-unit structure.
Yeah.
Yes, no, but, but let me, let me, let me just get to sort of why, why we have to say not just yes to a deferral.
Yeah, understand, yeah.
Yeah. Um, so, our, our concerns have been enumerated in, in our submitted materials. Um, our, our concerns, uh, then come about the, the, sort of what happens with and after the deferral.
Okay.
Um, we have expressed openness to a laneway house that conforms to city regulations and gave positive feedback to the original plans shared by the applicant. Um, however, the site plan that was ultimately submitted bore little resemblance to the plans that, uh, had already been, we'd been consulted on.
Mm-hmm.
Um, uh, and in subsequent communications, the applicant has stated that it's only financially feasible for him to build if he is granted a variance for two units.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, uh, this is in order to capitalize on public financing available to rental properties of five or more units. Uh, he's also indicated that he, he is unwilling to pay for a below-grade foundation
Mm-hmm.
um, and therefore requires a taller structure. Therefore, yes, so, so we...
Yeah, so a deferral may give you, uh, people and...
That is, so, so our, our position is that we do not oppose a, a deferral, provided that it is used for substantive revision and good-faith consultation.
Okay, thank you, we, yeah, we can emphasize that.
Yes, that's what I, that's what, that's what we'd like to emphasize, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, uh, any other speakers on the deferral? Okay.
Uh, hello, this is Tara, can you hear me?
Yes, you can hear me.
I just, I just saw that I was unmuted, so my name is Tara Lenahan. I'm at 122 Henford for the record and I just want to reiterate what Josh has just mentioned as he has, um, spoken on behalf of many of us as residents. I do support the deferral, I won't get into the details of what I've responded. However, I do want to make a point, um, when I look at the minor variance of, um, with the zoning of, uh, one unit to two units, to me, as a financial person, that's a hundred percent increase. That would not be a minor variance in my mind, uh, as a businessperson or as a, uh, city committee member. So, just, I just wanted to put that on record.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And you saw you agree with the deferral, okay, thank you.
To you, Madam Chair, we don't have any other speakers.
Okay, thank you. So, let's bring back the agent and, um, it seems that everybody agrees to, uh, to the deferral except that we would like to, uh, uh, mention their reasons that, why they agree and also when you say that you will need extra time to address to the neighbors and I think that is a good reason, but also they also request that, uh, the drawings will be at least revised or, or accurate drawings.
Yes.
Yeah, when you approach them and then I will very strongly, I would recommend you to reach out to them, yeah.
For sure.
What, so we are in commi, now we are in committee with, with those reasons, yeah.
Maybe I'll move this one Chair, yeah, I, I think, uh, this one definitely needs a deferral and I'm hoping that the, uh, applicant will not only consult with the neighbors.
Yes.
But also look into the, the right-of-way because there's a good possibility they may not have access to that right-of-way because they intending to park their vehicles because it's an unusual, uh, shaped lot. So I, I, having said that, I'd just like to move an, uh, a motion to approve a deferral.
Yes, yes.
I'll second that, Chair.
Yeah, Pete, so with all those reasons and I, 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 in good faith, I know that you will do that and we will, uh, uh, all in favor of the deferral? All in favor unanimously, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes. And we, are we going back to item three?
We'll stay at the end.
Okay, oh, I see, yeah, you already said that we will move it to the end, yeah. Uh, now, item number six with, uh, 90 and 10 Arlington Avenue East. The purpose to, is to order the development standards, uh, under, uh, some, uh, site-specific bylaw uh, for 61-story two-tower mixed-use development and at the, uh, uh, which is Tower A and Block 1 and Tower B at the northeast corner of the lot, Block 2. By increasing the northeast podium height from one-story nine meter to four stories and reducing building setback at the northeast lot line, there will be a total of 1,343 residential units on this lot of which a minimum of 4,595, uh, square meter, approximately 72 units will be maintained for affordable units by a social housing provider. A site-specific, a, a related site control application is currently under review. We have, uh, received a survey site plan for plan elevation, six photographs, a cover letter and a... letter, and a planning rationale from the agent, and surfacing memo by, by, as an engineer firm, and transportation memo, and a presentation material from the agent and the site-specific zoning bylaw, we also received email corresponding from development engineering, and also a staff report from the MetroLink Corporation, so, okay, welcome.
To you, Madam Chair, we have the agent in person here, and no registered speaker.
No registered, so since it is quite, usually we would like to have a brief presentation for this type of more complex building, and just tell us in a nutshell what you want to do, yeah?
Good morning, Madam Chair, just two things for the record, we've got no revisions, and I'm here speaking as the agent David Bronskill, address 333 Bay Street, Suite 3400, Toronto, Ontario, and I'm just joined at the panel here, this is Mike Drawr, a planner at Bowes Fields, he's not intending to speak, but just in case there were any planning-related questions, they're the planning firm involved, and Madam Chair, I hope, there should also be, I think it was listed, but September 30th, the planning staff, there was initially the email where they had indicated it could proceed, but they followed it up with a more formal staff report, indicating the report be received, but indicating that they have no objections, because we have been working very closely with city planning staff, what I'm going to suggest to the committee, just very quickly in terms of the presentation, there's really two variances before you, although there are six variances listed, and what I mean by that is variance one has a slightly revised height, which we can show you in the presentation, variance two is then related to that, because it, really the only thing that changes in variance two is a reference to the revised diagram three, but all the projections that are in the parent bylaw stay the same, so it looks really meaty variance two, but it's really one word, and it's revised diagram three, otherwise everything stays the same, the second variance is really variance three, which relates to setbacks on the east side, variances four, five, and six then flow from that, again, all of those performance standards are the same, it's just diagram three is then changed to revised diagram three, so it's really only those two variances that are picked up, and they all come from that revised diagram three, just quickly in terms of the presentation, this is a site north side of Eglington, east of Young, very close obviously to one of the most important transit stations with the intersection of the subway and the LRT, the variances come out of a few design changes that have just sort of happened through the site plan process with staff, there's some additional commercial uses, there's a redistribution of amenity space, but some of the most important parts of this two-tower approval that went through the city remain, and that's a very significant public realm contribution, almost 4,600 square meters of affordable housing, and as well as an important widening along Eglington and a connection north to Roehampton, in this presentation that's on the screen, if staff could just go through to slide four, because I won't go through all the pages with you, thank you, you can see there, in this really important development, there's a square in the bottom right-hand corner, that's where there's mostly a change, it is also the east tower setback that is slightly reduced, which I'll show to you, but the most significant change is really there in that square box, and it's some redistribution of some amenity space, and so staff can just go forward to the slide that says approved diagram three, thank you very much, that's what's approved in the zoning bylaw, I'm going to draw two things to your attention on the right-hand side, the area that says height nine meters, that's going to change, and ten point five on the east tower setback, that's going to change, and if we can just go to the next slide, you'll see that the setback is now ten, so we're still maintaining a ten-meter setback with support of city staff, which isn't the twelve-and-a-half recommended overall, but is a setback that's commonly accepted, especially in these types of urban situations at Young and Eglington, importantly, we maintain the twenty-four meters between the tower, which is where that really important public space and connection, and then you can see what we've done is fill in a really, I'm going to call it awkward space at the northeast corner, you're seeing the height there of eighteen meters, that's because we're going to put some of the amenity that had been in some of the podium and towers into a three- and four-story component there at the northeast, and if staff just go forward, there's one that says proposed site plan, you can just see where that's then picked up, that northeast, there's a fourth-floor outdoor amenity space, and then you can also see why we want to keep that twenty-four meters between the towers, it's a really generous wide space, comes between the towers, there may be an office component and a bridge above it, it's really a spectacular, spectacular space, wide Eglington Avenue, it's really an incredible space, so those are really the only two variances, I can go through the balance of the presentation, but we have worked extensively with staff, it's come out of the site plan process, and all of the public benefits are still maintained.
Thank you, yeah, all right, any questions?
Through you, Madam Chair, we can also show the extra late planning report that was received on the screen, just for your reference, staff will pull that up now, and May Mom, if you can just scroll to the top of the report under recommendations.
Yeah, we have, just say that we have received the information.
Yes, thank you.
Actually, I do have one question, it's only, I do not understand it, so maybe you can explain, can you staff bring up the planning email correspondence, it's in the main folder, not the supplemental material, F1, planning email corresponding, I just do not understand all the acronyms, they say lifting the H and then the MV circulation going forward, what are those things?
Oh, so MV would be the minor variance application?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I should have known, right?
No, no, and, and, and there is in the bylaw that we are varying, there is a holding provision that we have to lift as a separate process, and it relates to delivering some of the public benefits, and so that's a separate process that we're undertaking as well, so that's when she says there, or sorry, Shane, when he says there, their approach to lifting the H, that's an ongoing discussion that we're having with staff, it's, it's a delegated application to staff for their approval, so that process is ongoing as well.
Okay, so also the affordable units, are you in direct, like contract with the, whatever the agency, agency providing these units, or through the city?
It's, the, the affordable units will be done through a social housing provider, and integrated into the building, and then secured in an agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Chair, just one question about that, the commercial, or the newly filled-in awkward corner at the back, can you just talk about the adjacencies, what's there on the adjacent, what's close to it on the adjacent lots?
Yeah, so that's a, a good question, we do have photos in this package, and let me just get them to my hard copy. There's both an existing, but there's also a proposal for that rectangular area that sits to the south of that really awkward space, so the photos show the rear, you can see what's there, in fact, today is a blank brick wall, we're looking southwest in the, yeah, those there, you can see the photos there, yeah, we're looking southwest there from 101 Roehampton, which is actually to the north, back through to our existing building, and then that blank wall condition, so it really is a funny weird awkward space, if the existing remained, we'd, we'd have blank wall conditions essentially, which I think work well, there is a proposal, and we've included that, it's going through a process, I understand it's some, subject to some revisions, it's a seventy-story tower, we've included it there, it has podiums in that area as well, so there'll be some blank wall conditions, they've got some exterior amenity that they're proposing, they've got a tower face, we would say it's slightly too close to our property line, I understand that they're talking to city staff about, I think, moving it slightly, which would be a good thing, we'd then have the right tower separation, but that's for them hopefully to agree to do, and then it would be a tower that would be sitting there, and so you'd have podiums with amenity space, and if the seventy-story tower goes through and gets approved, as is, you would then have towers with good tower separation, and then amenities on those podiums, so I think both existing and future will work well.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, so another question is, you have the two towers, twenty-four meters apart, so is the, like, the wind study is done okay?
Yes.
With pedestrian level?
Yeah, we've, through, through the-
I didn't see it's okay, but-
Yeah. No, 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 it's, it's a great question, through the approval process, it's actually been a two-step approval process, there was a, an application that we initially filed was August 2022, two towers, fifty-nine stories, fifty-nine stories atop a nine-story podium, that then was revised upwards slightly to sixty-one and sixty-one, that went through in November 2024 and was approved by city council, all of that was subject to wind analysis for that approval to go through city council, and then we've ensured that with these slight tweaks, that the wind remains acceptable, in fact, it, it will be slightly better because that area in the northeast with that outdoor amenity space will take some wind, which would have gone down to grade before where we didn't have structure, and then the outdoor amenity space can then be programmed as well to ensure that there's wind mitigations in the site plan process on that rooftop space, so, so the wind on the outdoor will be mitigated, and importantly, then wind in that northeast corner that had been at grade will be completely eliminated.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you, any other questions, okay, we, we don't have any more questions, but we are in committee now, okay.
Madam Chair, sorry, can I interject on one thing, I would be remiss, there is a MetroLinks report.
Yes.
They have an odd suggestion for a condition.
Four and five.
Yeah, and I, five's a comment, and I don't think should be a condition, four is phrased as a condition, but it's really oddly phrased, because it says we have to go through a technical review before they can approve the variance, they don't approve a variance, obviously the committee does, we have submitted documents to MetroLinks already through the technical review process, I would just, it, it could stay as an advisory comment, if the committee saw foot, fit to put it as a condition, I would just want to make sure that any reference to them approving a variance is not included.
Maybe our staff will relate it to the-
Through the chair, so the MetroLinks condition number four, they do preface it as a condition, so it would be, if you decide to impose that condition, it would be like a typical condition prior to building permit, that the application would be subject to this technical review for approval by MetroLinks, it wouldn't be that, MetroLinks would have to approve this application, it would be our typical language.
But exactly, so what I'm saying, there may be some, some time with you, with the community, just when we relate the wording, clear up the wording with, because we keep receiving this type of comment from them, we don't want to have the, every single time, Mr. Bronskill can, can picked up, but the other applicant may have missed, and then they think that they are the ones approving their variances, so maybe relate to, okay, and, and, thank you for, for raising that point, yeah, okay.
Chair, I'm, I'm happy to move, move this motion, I think it's a very reasonable application, and usually when we see intense developments like this coming to the committee, it's, it's popping up five or ten stories, and there's none of that happening here, this is really keeping with the, the main approved bylaw, the massing is not changing significantly, the only thing that really is, is that awkward corner is now being used a lot more efficiently, and I think that's a positive thing, and they'll have very little to, to no impact on the adjacent properties, so I, I think that's great, I do think the point about the MetroLinks condition is good, it's important that they review it, but I, I'd like to remove that part of their, their condition that says that, about approving it, so just, subject to MetroLinks technical review.
Thank you.
So I move approval, subject to that modified MetroLinks condition.
Yes, and also I, I would like to add, I, I, I like the fact that they consider affordable housing, and then I think that is time to gradually work that part into our city, yeah, thank, thank you, anyone want to second that? Yeah, by a second, with the amendment of the MetroLink comment, all in favor? A poll unanimously, thank you for coming, yes. And are we going back, oh, no, sorry, number seven is 53 Brunswick Avenue, this is to construct a new two-story detached, detached ossidere building which will contain one, one-car garage on ground floor and a laneway suite on second level, in the, in the rear yard abutting the laneway, Chapel Hospice Lane, there will be a total of two residential dwelling units on the lot, and one in the main building, and also one in the ossidere building, we received survey site plan for plant elevation, six photographs of the property, and also email corresponding from the agent, and we receive one, one opposition from 60 Major Street, yeah, ready for the agent or the applicant.
To you, Madam Chair, we have the agent online, and no other speakers.
Yes.
Sorry, my name is not Atheneo, my name is Xiao Wang, I am at 59 Laurel Leaf Road, I am the representative of the agent, just speaking on his behalf for this property, so, yeah, we are proposing a two-story laneway suite, I know currently we don't, we didn't get the, some letters from, of support from our neighbors on time in, but we do, we have spoken to the three immediate neighbors, aside from the hospice next door, so from 55 Brunswick, as well as forty and, let me just pull that, as well as from 42 and 44 Brunswick, and they are in support of this development as well, we just have not had the chance to submit the letters, they arrived late.
Yes, and do we require a presentation?
I have a question.
Yeah, we do have some questions, I have one, yeah, please, go ahead, Mr.-
Thank you, Chair, my question is about the access to it, the, the garage door that you're proposing facing north spans most of, of the laneway suite, but half of that is, more than half of it is beyond the neighboring property line to the north, it looks like you have to drive across 55's property to gain access to the laneway suite, so I'm concerned about that.
That's a current condition, actually, so that's the current condition of the laneway, our, our yard, side yard opening is that wide, so if you go to the photos, I think we, there's a photo of it, so if you, if you can keep going. Okay, sorry, I guess a photo of that area was not submitted, but, yeah, the, the, the current garage that they have built is setback already, we have spoken to the neighbors, and they have no plans, and we will, we have already spoken with them, so that's why it's the same size as the current opening to our yard, side yard.
Okay, I, but my concern is more like, if we could pull up the site plan.
Yeah.
And zoom in on that, like, I'm glad you have a agreement with the, the current neighbor, but if, if there's a future neighbor, they could build a fence basically to block three-quarters of your garage door, is that, am I right in assuming that?
Um, yes.
Okay, so then you, you'd just have an unusable garage portion, but the laneway suite would still function?
Yeah, we would probably convert the garage to something to, to, to the, to a suite as well at that point.
Right, okay, thanks.
Yes, yeah, they may work something out in the future, okay, yeah, it's good to find out, because we cannot guarantee you can get to the garage for sure, yeah.
Yeah, we also talked about, with the neighbors, about maybe forming an easement agreement with them, at least for a certain specific time, so that it's in there, so that's something we will discuss with the neighbors, I, I don't think the, we need to discuss that with the committee, but we'll discuss with the neighbors in terms of that, so that we would have an opening for our garage for longer term, in terms of property.
Okay, any other questions? Oh, I have a very minor question, because you do receive one opposition letter from 60 Major Street, and then he, can you, staff bring it up, but if, maybe you can speak to that, just briefly, yeah, I'm not too sure it's related to, I mean, the issue is related to what you propose, but, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I do see, now I have read this, so I think he may be misunderstanding where the one-liter setback is, as we're not interrupting the actual laneway, we do, our neighbors have also mentioned- as we're not interrupting the actual laneway. Um we do, our neighbors have also mentioned uh at forty-two uh at forty forty-four, and uh they have mentioned that um they're worried during construction that we may be blocking the laneway, and we discussed with them, and they have asked, do we provide them twenty-four hour notice, if we do any concrete pouring or anything that that would take up the laneway? Uh but other than that, we do not anticipate building into the laneway or blocking anyone's existing entrances. We are purely building within our lot, and the 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 lot is directly behind us. Forty-two have given us um given us their approval, uh as in the other side that we're seeking the variance from is the hospital. And there is nothing on that side that would uh we would be interfering with.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'm glad you addressed that. Thank you. That's it. Um now, we do not have any more questions. We are in committee now. Yes, please.
Thanks, thanks, Chair. Yeah, I I think this is a good application. I mean, I I am concerned about the access, but that's got nothing to do with the variance. Before us, it's just a one variance, and it's to the south side, which is an institutional use, and I uh it's one meter, zero meters instead of one, so I think the impact of that, particularly because it's it's not um because there is some separation there, is very minimal. So I'm I'm happy to move approval um without condition.
Okay, uh Mister McKay, second, thank you. All in favor of no conditions, uh all in favor unanimously approved, uh thank you. And uh we move to item number eight, which is fifty-three A.
Sorry, through you, Madam Chair, I have received word that the agent for item number three is online, and uh there are no registered speakers for that item, and they have provided assurances that they should be able to connect. So perhaps we uh do item three.
Okay, we can go back to item number three, uh seventy Cambridge Avenue. This is to convert the lobby or the, yeah, no, the lounge on ground floor to uh additional dwelling unit.
Walter, you are muted? Walter, can you hear us?
Agent for item number three, Walter, I understand you're online. Okay, through you, Madam Chair, third time is not a charm. We will be standing this item down to the end of the morning agenda. Thank you.
All right, so we try, you see, right, we keep trying. All right, so uh now back to uh item number eight, fifty-three A Mutual Street. This is to order the existing two-and-a-half story semi-detached by increasing the non-residential floors uh space index. We have received survey site plan for plans and elevations, four photographs of the property and a couple of letters from agent. We also receive uh corresponding uh uh from MetroLinks. That's all we have received on this item. And we are ready for the agent.
Through you, Madam Chair, uh item number nine, we could hear uh.
Together.
Together.
Oh, okay, can I read it? Uh uh item number nine is fifty-three Mutual Street. This is a similar, uh is to order the existing two-and-a-half-story attached building by increasing the non-residential floor space index. And we have survey site plans, four plans, elevations, and four photographs of the property, and also a letter from the agent. We also receive MetroLink comment. So we're going to hear this together.
Through you, Madam Chair, we have the agent online and no other speakers.
Through you, Madam Chair, we do have a registered speaker in interest for item eight, fifty-three A Mutual Street. Uh their address is seventy-six Shooter Street, Unit four oh six. However, staff have confirmed that they are not online.
Oh. So the speaker in opposition will not be speak.
Through the chair, staff have made multiple attempts to reach the speaker, and they are not online.
Okay. So are we going to have the agent re- online, okay?
Samuel, you are unmuted.
Um good morning, I'm Sam Chan. I'm the agent speaking on behalf of, yeah, both files, eight zero five six four and eight zero five six five. Um as mentioned, we're seeking to increase the non-res FSI um for both sites from point five to point zero. And this is just to allow any portion of the existing building to be used for non-res uses. Um supporting that analysis, I summarized in a couple of letters, so I'm not going to go into too much detail. But the only thing I want to note is, we provided plans to illustrate an example of the uses which could occupy the various floors. Um and so therefore, we are seeking to not tie the variance to the plan as the uses are subject to change as the owner receives um interest from different potential retail units.
Okay, um. Any questions? Yeah, we do not have any more questions. Um uh so do you, are we going to discuss this um uh make a decision on it? Do you have any other issues you want to address the panel now?
Uh no, that was the only one I want to note.
Okay, now we are in committee. Yes, yes, Mister Byatt.
Sure, thank you. Chair, take these. Um I I think this is a very straightforward application, uh to change uh an FSI for non-residential purposes or non-residential uses.
Mm-hmm.
Um I don't see any downside to this particular application, or applications, I should say, both eight and nine.
Mm-hmm.
So I'd like to move approval of both.
Oh, oh, Mister Byatt, I'm sorry, uh before you do that, because I I I have a note here, and I forgot to mention. Uh we we move out of the committee. I want to ask applicant, it's a small thing, but I think it's significant enough to to make um some revision on uh fifty, number, item number eight. The variance uh of point uh two times. The area should be three hundred and fifty-two meter instead of the three hundred and fifty meter. It's a two-meter difference, so I but the percentage is time, it's fine, two, it's two times, but I think there's some calculation, they're omitting two meters, yeah. Two fifty-two, uh three fifty-two, it should be. What do you think? I I checked a few times, because it's a two-meter difference. I think that is significant enough that we noted that it's a, just a miscalculation. The percentage is stays the same, two times, yeah.
Um yeah, we can double check that. Um. I have it at three five zero um for mine. Uh either way, um so we.
I I I checked, my calculator maybe is not correct.
No worries. Um either way, we we did ask for a small buffer on both of them, so it would maintain two-point-zero for both sites. So if there's a small difference, I don't think it'll impact it too much.
So let's let's forget, and then let's move on the, uh thank you very much. Let's move back into committee, and let's continue your motion, please. He's fine with that, okay.
Thank you, Chair. Um so just picking up from what I left off was that I'd like to move approval
Mm-hmm.
Of both uh item number eight and number nine. Uh single variances for both, just FSI change and use change. Uh there are no conditions as far as I can see.
Okay, uh Mister McKay, second, thank you. Uh all in favor with the MetroLink advisory com- uh comment? Thank you, all in favor. Uh unanimously approved, both uh number, item number eight and nine, yeah. Okay, uh item number ten is five sixty-two Dover Court Road. This is to construct a new one-story detached detached ossicular building, which is a two-car garage in the rear yard. And we have received survey site plan for plants and elevation photographs, two photographs of the property, and also a decision previous decision affecting the property, and that's all we have received is, we accept the agent, please, or the applicant.
To you, Madam Chair, we have the agent here in person and no other speakers.
Yeah. Thank you, welcome.
Good morning, Madam Chair and committee members. I'm Robert McCray.
Yes.
I'm the architect for the applicant, and I'm at forty-four Jake Street in the city.
Yeah, it seems to, are you looking for two variances and uh so uh is there there? Do you, you want to have a presentation or you have questions?
Uh I um I'd just like to say a couple of words.
Yes, please, yes, go ahead.
So the um so the proposal is to demolish the existing garage and to construct a new two-car garage with an ancillary space.
Mm-hmm.
Uh and of course, the variances that we're seeking are to do with the actual floor area of the ancillary building and also the uh overall footprint on the the property.
Mm-hmm.
Um in our view, it uh it, the uh the proposal meets the intent of the official plan and the zoning bylaw, the intent and the purpose.
Mm-hmm.
Um are the variances desirable? Well, we we think there's very little impact on the neighboring properties.
Mm-hmm.
Uh we think um that providing two-car parking uh off the street is, improves the street.
Mm-hmm.
We have set back the um the garage from the the laneway lot line, and we think that improves the the lane. Um are the variances minor? Um well, we we believe they're consistent with some of the other garages in the that abut the lane.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Uh by by the way, I was just made aware of a committee of adjustment
Mm-hmm.
Uh decision in October sixth, twenty twenty-one
Mm-hmm.
That permitted a larger footprint for the the garage.
Yes, yeah, that's one of the uh I might ask the questions, that that's one of the question I have is that you you got approved uh uh twenty twenty-one for floor space is sixty-nine point seven meter, and this time you're asking for a little bit bigger, it's eighty-one or something. Eight, yeah, so what's the reason why you say bigger?
Well, to be honest with you, I wasn't aware of the uh the previous decision until yesterday, so.
Oh.
Right, uh so I went ahead with what the client wanted.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so the difference between that decision and today's hopefully favorable decision is eleven meters, eleven square meters.
Yes, and you you know where, so that this, based on that, it seems that they already approved this quite a lot increase from, you allow forty square meter already, and then so that explain why you 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 come back and ask him for a little bit more.
Right.
Okay, thank you, yeah. Any other questions? Yeah, okay, all right. Uh wait, wait, we we are in committee now, wait, wait, yeah, yeah, okay.
I I'd just like to make some comments and share these with my colleagues. I I I, when I looked at this, of course, the the thing that jumps out is the fact that the this, the 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 floor area we're looking at is more than double, a little bit more than double.
Yeah.
And then, of course, what you just mentioned a moment ago, that the previous decision was for a certain amount, now we're going even further. And I find that a little um concerning, that we've gone from what is allowed and uh contrary to what the agent just said, I don't think doubling is minor.
Yeah, yeah.
A doubling is 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 quite substantial. Um and the uh lot area coverage as well, it's almost three times.
Mm-hmm.
So we've got, I I I am concerned about this particular application. I'm not quite sure if I'm fully supportive of it or not, because I don't find either of the variances minor.
Yeah, but I, okay, I understand, they get, they can default to their twenty twenty-one decision.
Absolutely, yeah.
What do you think, Peter?
Yeah, well, it's a kind of hard one, I think, because of the context. Like, there are, I mean, it does appear like there are many very large garages on Dover Court. Uh and I know that lane well, and have I've walked it many times. Um and additionally, because of the the size of these lots, like, they're almost two hundred feet long for this section of the city, that is, that's really deep, so I think that mitigates, that mitigates part of it. Um so yeah, it it does feel, the the numbers, I think, are very large, and the doubling is not great. But I think that it's mitigated enough by its context and the lot size that I I will support it.
Okay, yeah. Uh um any other comment? I I I I will comment on some, yeah, after looking at the photographs they actually provide, I think and also I look at the distance between the house and the garages, it's quite a large distance. Maybe these are lots that can accommodate a larger garage. And I I I also think that uh it's a it's a strange situation. Maybe they did miss the last uh uh decision, maybe it's a change of owner, I don't know.
I think there was a different owner at the last decision.
Exactly, they they didn't even know that existed, because if we were happy with the sixteen and one and sixty-nine, they they probably will just go through with the going, coming back here again, so. Uh I I also, I I I do not have any problem because of this specific site and also the um the the size of the lodge and all, that might support the extra area. Okay, uh do we have a motion?
Well, I'm not sure where Gary stands on it, so I'll just, I'll go ahead for the re-
I support.
You are, okay. For the reasons I stated, um I'm I'm gonna move approval of the application without condition.
And Mister.
I'll second that.
Mister McKay's uh uh second that, all in favor?
Okay.
And three one, yeah, Mister Byatt dissent, yeah. Three one approved, thank you, yeah, yeah.
Through you, Madam Chair, if members need a break, this may be a a good time before we hear item eleven and and twelve together.
Yes, thank you.
Through the chair, do members wish a five-minute or ten-minute break?
Uh ten.
Ten minutes, okay, thank you. So we will resume uh in ten minutes. Members, please mute your microphones and turn off your cameras. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. The time is good, walking around a little bit. That's very odd, you know how much. So he did not, he did not like that. Like they're feeling, they're feeling, they're coming back and I shouldn't be, we feel like we need to try another subject. But this case, I think it's not for the English.
I'm not aware.
Well, that's exactly my, even on surveys, individuals who are public and on surveys at this point, they have no interest in having a good conversation and all of the behavior erratic on kids, behavior that we've seen subsequent to that White House meeting, which suggests the American actually is trying to find a solution that we continue to say, we will have a mind-paused discussion despite that his mind is.
Oh, I see, it seems she's on, okay, now it's off.
It looks like we've got two together again?
Okay, we ready?
Yeah, so we can hear ten and eleven.
Ten and eleven together?
Oh, sorry, not ten, sorry, eleven and twelve.
Get my notes, sir.
Okay, so then the agent wants to hear them separately, just because one has more.
Yeah, it's got four variances. Okay.
Separately, okay. So now we move on to eleven, item eleven, it's related to Fernwood Park Avenue. This is the altered existing two-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a partial third-floor story addition. And we have first-floor level deck and we have, and south basement walkout. The front porch will be constructed with a canopy and stairs. And one parking space will be located in the rear yard and will be accessible from a shared mutual right-of-way between thirty and thirty-two Fernwood Park Avenue. There will be a total of two residential dwelling units as a duplex on this lot. And one in the basement level and also one occupy the first, second, and third levels. We received survey site, site plan for plan elevations, cover letter from agent and decision affecting property, and Abrams report and correspondent from the agent and presentation material from the agent. We have also received support from twenty-five Bottom Avenue and thirty-three A Fernwood Park Road and thirty Fernwood Park Avenue, no, Fernwood Park Avenue, not Road. And we received oppositions from thirty-five Fernwood Park Avenue and also twenty-three and a half Bottom Avenue. This is, this is all the material we have received, ready for the agent, yes.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Jonathan Skelinski, three zero one Q Y Matthew.
Yes, so you do have some opposition, do we have speakers on this?
Through you, Madam Chair, we do have one speaker in person for this address, for this item.
Okay, so we do require a presentation from you.
Oh, absolutely.
And also, do you want to bring some material up before you start?
It's already up.
It's already up, okay, so you're ready to give us a five-minute?
Absolutely, we can go to page three, please. So this is our second time in front of the Committee of Adjustment. The first application, other than, and I'll get to thirty-four next, the main difference between what is being proposed today from thirty-two and the original refused previous application is essentially the height of the first floor platform has been removed. Part of the concerns of the panel as well as the neighbors was, again, the height of the first floor platform. That variance has now been removed. So in terms of, okay. Thank you. So the height of the first floor platform has been removed. It was originally two point seven meters, that has now been removed. So if we see from the screen of what is on the top portion, the two yellow requests have been removed from the previous. The two new requests essentially deal with the front encroachment of the canopy, which exists today. There is no change to that location of the front canopy. Again, and the side yard setback of the front porch. If we now go into the next page and we zoom in on the bottom right, basically what's happened is the existing stair is on the northern portion of the property. The proposal is to relocate it to the southern portion of the property. Because we're rebuilding the canopy, we don't get the relief of maintaining it of the existing side yard setbacks. So essentially, the look of the dwelling as it faces Fernwood is zoning bylaw compliant if we look at it under the umbrella of really just relocating a stair and building a platform. In terms of the built form variances that are before you, there are none. As we can see, this is a renovation, the side walls are being maintained, the front wall is being maintained, the rear wall is being maintained. The height is zoning bylaw compliant as well as the main wall height compliant. So in terms of from a planning and an impact perspective, this is really as technical as it can get, which, again, just a relocation of the stairs and the rebuilding of the canopy essentially in the same picture, in the same position. If we go to the next slide, please, it is just showing that existing canopy that is there, that covers that front porch. We are, again, maintaining it, just relocating it, as well as relocating the stairs from the northern portion to the southern portion. That's essentially it, really as simple as possible. I'm happy to answer any questions if the committee has any.
Yeah, okay, we might hold our question to you, we have listened to the opposition and then, yeah, they put.
Okay, my name is Susan Walker, I live at thirty-six Fernwood Park Avenue.
Okay.
I'm his direct north neighbor.
Okay.
The biggest issue I have with the variances at number thirty-four.
Oh, we.
Through the chair, so we're speaking to item eleven right now, which is thirty-two Fernwood Park.
Oh, sorry, I'm just.
That's okay, that's okay. So if there's anyone here in person to speak to item eleven, please come up. That's thirty-two Fernwood Park, thank you.
Thank you. We thought that the matters, this is the same address, it's the same project, it's the same, essentially the same application and that's why this confusion occurred. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the committee for this opportunity to appear. My name is Paul Somerville, that's S O M M E R V I L L E. I'm appearing as agent for Ron Peterson, who is the tenant in thirty-four A Fernwood Park Avenue. And he opposed the last application successfully and we are opposing this application for minor variance as well. I'm mindful of the time and I note that there will be a speaker after me that will address some of the issues and so I will skip over some of those quickly. We firmly oppose this op, this application and urge that it be denied in its entirety. First, it's important to put the application into its proper context. There is nothing minor about this application. This project, this proposal is nothing less than an elimination of four reasonably priced apartments, replacing them with one single-family dwelling and a basement apartment. This has obvious major implications for those directly affected who have all received eviction notices, but also for the community as a whole. Changes of this kind change the character of the neighborhood and run counter to a societal interest and policy interest in reasonably priced and diverse housing. Second, there are serious issues with respect to the parking proposals embedded in this application. And I believe that the person who is going to follow me in her comments about the item number twelve on the agenda, she will deal with those in considerable detail. But it would appear to me that there is not sufficient space to, the applicant refers to one and one-half of a parking space. Well, we know what use a half of a parking space is, it's of no use whatsoever. It would also appear that there is not enough space in the front to allow the applicant access to the proposed garage. In short, available parking in the locale is negatively impacted when, precisely, when parking is at a premium and an important social attribute. Third, aesthetics. The proposed outcome places the aforementioned garage facing the street. Even if there is enough room to get into the garage, which is doubtful, it is totally incongruous with the rest of the neighborhood. No other houses on the street have a front-facing garage. Instead, they all have small gardens and porches facing the garage. It's that kind of neighborhood, Madam Chair. I strongly urge the committee to reject this application for the reasons cited. It's not minor, it has major implications. It is not desirable for the appropriate use of the property. It is contrary to a variety of city policies and objectives and it violates the city's well-known interest in preserving the very kind of housing it is eliminating. And I note, you know, from the last decision that the committee made, the, we believe that, that the criteria, the four criteria, the primary four criteria that are applied by the committee, it meets none of them. And that's, those are my submissions.
Okay, just wait.
Thank you.
Yeah, but just wait, do we have any question for this speaker?
Not for me, thanks.
Oh, no, thank you, yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And that's the, for this item, that's all the speakers?
Correct.
Okay, so, yes, thank you.
I don't really have anything to say, we're not proposing a garage as per this application.
Okay.
And excuse me, we're just, you're speaking just to thirty-two?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
But it did say that, is it, in, in, in the purpose clause, did we mention that's a garage?
There's a parking in the rear yard, through the mutual right-of-way.
Oh, it's existing, it's not a new, new, new one?
It is new in the rear yard, it is, it is actually going to be an improvement of what's there, but it is in the rear yard, there's no garage proposed with thirty-two.
Yeah, I see, yeah.
If I could, just, I'm sorry, just something occurred to me, since we've got the parking space in the rear for thirty-two, it hasn't triggered a rear yard landscaping at all?
Through you, Madam Chair, it has not, Mr. Byatt, no, correct.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, and I, I think that you addressed all the issues we raised.
Again, Madam Chair, very technical in nature with the two variances, essentially dealing with the new canopy being built and the relocation of the stairs from the north to the south. As I showed on the existing site plan and survey, it really is a similar encroachment of the stairs that's there today, it's just been moved.
Okay, thank you, any other questions for the speaker? So we do not have any more questions for you on this item?
Thank you.
And now we are in committee, yeah, so I want to, yeah, please, please.
Sure, Chair, I can start, I mean, thanks to the, the speaker who spoke about, on behalf of the tenants, I, I understand that concern, that that's a concern of all of ours, I think, but there is nothing in relation to these variances that, that speak to that, and that the city does have policies about rental replacement, but that's only, that's only triggered at a certain size of, of development and certain number of units that get removed. But in, in terms of the two variances that are before us for this, I, I agree with the applicant that these are, they are relatively technical, there's, they're very minor changes to the front canopy and, and the stairs, and so I, I move approval of, of these two variances for thirty-two Fernwood Park.
There's no conditions, right?
No conditions.
No conditions.
Okay, who, do I have a second? Mister McCain, second, and all in favor of no conditions, it is a missed approval.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we're ready for the next item, number twelve, is thirty-four Fernwood Park Road, and, I'm sorry, it's Fernwood Park Avenue, is to alter the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing and in the go garage, a partial first-floor addition, and a rear basement walkout, and a rear first floor, first level deck. The front porch will be reconstructed with a canopy and stairs. There will be a total of two residential units, a duplex on this lot, and one in the basement level and one occupied the first, second, and third levels. We receive a survey site plan for plan elevations and a revised site plan for plan elevation and a revised, I'm not, a red line, public notice, and revised zoning waiver, and also a cover letter from the agent and the decision affecting the property, and Abrams report, and tree protection plan, and, and we, also a correspondence from the owner, and another correspondence from the agent, and also presentation material from the agent. We receive also support from twenty-five Boston Avenue and thirty-eight, thirty-three A and thirty Fernwood Road Avenue. We have con- received a letter of concern or interest from thirty-six Fernwood Park Avenue. We receive a number of oppositions on this item is from forty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, forty, and twenty-eight from Fern, Fernwood Park Avenue, and, and thirty, including thirty-two A. We also receive twenty-three and a half and from Boston Avenue. And that's, yeah, okay, we are ready for, how many speakers?
Yes, through Madam Chair, we have the agents here in person, and two speakers in opposition that are in attendance, and also one speaker in the interest online as well.
Okay, so let's have a presentation from you, and let's tell the staff whether you want to bring up the material first.
I, I would love that, Madam Chair.
Before we, yeah, we kind of...
I did want to make, again, Jonathan Minskowski, three zero one QWOT in Avenue.
Yes.
I do want to just note one change that has been made to the proposal.
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's do all the revision first before the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Let's go through the presentation.
So we did, we did submit a revised, marked-up public notice?
Yes.
With the elimination, sorry, with the reduction of one of the variances? So the soft yard landscaping will now read as requested at sixty-three point six percent?
Yes.
Or three point two five square meters?
Yes.
That's the only chair, that's the only change before you, Madam Chair.
Oh, okay, that's the only one?
Correct.
All right, thank you, yeah, that's a fun yard, you, we got that one, right?
And through the chair to the agent, what about parking or front yard parking? Does the purpose of application need to be amended at all?
It does, it does not, Madam Deputy Secretary, no. But it does not, no, it is just, it is, I will explain that, if we could bring up that site plan.
Yeah, bring up the material, we can start the clock when, again, when he's ready.
I, I'm ready, Madam Chair. We can go to page two, maybe zoom in on the, the top part of it. So what we have done, and this is largely in response to conversations with some neighbors regarding the actual available parking space size as it extends from the southern portion of the proposed driveway to the existing curb cut. There was a request to widen that, the belief was that it was too narrow to fit a sort of a mid-size to a full-size SUV, so we did expand the, the area available to park between the proposed driveway at the southern end and the northern portion of the existing curb cut at thirty-two. So again, the curb cut at thirty-two, which exists from the previous application where we accessed the rear yard, we've expanded the, the available parking area, which also has led to a reduction of the width of parts, portions of the landscaped area. If we could just go to the third page of my presentation material, I've also submitted a similar chart to what is before you today, as I did at thirty-two for thirty-four. Again, the main highlight being the reduction, sorry, the elimination of two variances. One was the height of the dwelling above the established grade, the proposed dwelling is now located at the established grade at 1.2 meters, there is no longer a request before that, as well as a front exterior stair encroachment. Again, fairly similar to the previous proposal, two of these five variances, in my opinion, are very technical in nature. Those would be variances five and six, which again, is just the canopy and the relocation of the stairs. So again, fairly similar to thirty-two. In terms of the rear yard deck, again, it is set in point five four meters, I don't see any issue. It is on the second floor of the dwelling, not on the third floor dwelling. I don't see much of an impact between point five four and point nine meter deck. Turning to, to the landscaping itself, with the alteration that's been made, essentially, we're asking for a reduction of point zero five square meters, again, point zero five square meters. Again, the impact, really to the eye, no one would be able to see that. I do want to turn my attention to the front garage that is proposed. And, and I want to read variance number one, if we could just bring up the public notice, because I think it's important to read the variance itself and how that relates to the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw, which again, comes back to, again, that intent and purpose, which is the most important thing when we're evaluating it. It specifically reads that vehicle entrances through the front main wall of the building are permitted, provided. The lot has a minimum frontage of seven point six meters. Again, a minimum lot frontage, it does not speak to any type of parking as it relates to that. And then it says, in this case, the altered dwelling duplex will have a vehicle entrance through the front main wall and will be located on a lot with a frontage of five point four three meters. From a planning perspective, what that tells me about the intent and purpose of this is not to eliminate curb cuts, the curb cut is irrelevant to this. What this is saying is they don't want townhouses or reduced lot frontages to have a series of garages next to each other that in essence dominate a facade. Now, where this proposal is different, and why from a planning perspective, I believe this is appropriate, is this is a semi-detached dwelling essentially. So in terms of the massing of what you see on the actual dwelling itself from the streetscape, reads as a semi-detached dwelling with one garage. Important, again, number thirty-two does not have a proposed garage, it is only thirty-four. So that streetscape of how you're actually looking and you're experiencing this dwelling is essentially on a ten point four eight meter dwelling. We take the five point four three meters we have here, we know it's essentially lot line to lot line, and we times that by the southern dwelling. So the massing of the garage itself, okay, is on a ten point four, sorry, a ten point four six meter dwelling, which again, goes back to that intent and purpose of the request that's before you. Again, it does not speak to maintaining parking on the street, it speaks to the frontage of the lot and that intent and purpose relating to the facade and not wanting a facade to be dominated by garages on smaller, narrower lots. Again, in terms of the appropriateness, there, there are garages, there's a garage directly across the street. If we go to the last page of my presentation material, we can see on Fernwood Park, directly across the street, there is a garage on a similar dwelling that is before you today. I also just want to go back and, and, and address built form. The built form of the dwelling is exact as per the zoning bylaw. Again, front and rear walls are being maintained, there is no request for an increase in the building length or the building depth, nor a request for height or main wall height that is before you today. The built form of the dwelling is maintained, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the committee might have.
We will listen, we will hear the oppositions and then we'll get back to you, you have questions too. Yeah, okay, let's...
Okay.
Yes.
Susan Walker, thirty-six Fernwood Park Avenue.
Okay.
Okay, my biggest issue with the thirty-four is the garage in front. And the garage across the street is not a garage at all, it's a storage unit. It was built saying it was a garage, but it's in actual fact a storage unit. No cars ever fit in there, it's too low. One of the opposition people had mentioned that, so it's not a garage. But first and foremost, on Fernwood Park, on the west side of the street, is the only place for parking. That's where everyone parks, the west side of the street. No one on our side of the street has front yard parking, we've never been allowed front yard parking because we don't have enough room on our front yard to park a car. So everybody on the street and other streets in the area park on the west side of the street. So for him to take a parking spot off of the street from the entire community for his private use, meanwhile, taking two cars, two parking spaces from behind his building, he's taking, he's eliminating those two parking spots and then eliminating a spot on the street. So he's actually adding more cars to the street. He's going to be putting in a four-bedroom unit with a one-bedroom basement apartment on that, on thirty-four, plus a four-bedroom unit and a two-basement apartment on thirty-two. So he could be adding six more cars to the street and only providing possibly two parking spots. So he's just going to add to the congestion of our street that already is a nightmare. We have people that come there, winter, summer, weekends, weekdays, when the weather's nice, they come, they park on our street, they park there all day long, and also take up parking on our street. So for him to eliminate a spot from the whole community just doesn't seem fair or neighborly. Also, there are, all the houses on this, on our side of the street at least, have front yards with gardens and front porches. His house has no front porch, and he's eliminating, eliminating the garden in the front at thirty-four. He's removing a lilac tree that's been there for at least five years, taking out all the grass and putting in hardscaping, which is not attractive. So we, I kind of object to that as well, it's not, it doesn't fit into the community at all. I know, I don't know whether you can take that into consideration, but his is a glass box with no front yard or no front porch, so it's not inviting, it's not friendly, it's not neighborly. Hardscaping in the front and a pair, and two sets of stairs, so they can go into their house and not even have anything to do with the rest of us. He told me he, that he would be parking in the front yard, but he can't park in the front yard. And if he gets it, then why can't everybody other, every other person on the west side of the street then now also get front yard parking, and then nobody has parking? How is that helping the community at all? Also, the space, he's, he said that the, after the curb cut and the mutual drive, he's enlarged it so that a car can park there, but according to the thing he gave me, it was only seventeen feet four inches. And the city says, city itself says eighteen feet is what you need for a parking spot. So there are very few cars that are going to fit in that spot, so he's avenged, essentially taking out two spots off the street. Oh, I'm almost out of time, also, the building height, he's backed it up at the front, which is fine, but it, it's still looming in the back. We have a south exposure, so we are no longer going to get sun on our upper floor, he's going to block all of our sunlight there. I have to object to that because that takes away, I mean, we are already like twelve feet away from a building, so that's the only sunlight our house gets, so we're not going to have that anymore. And he says he's, well, I don't see any soft landscaping in the front at thirty-four, there's a little strip of grass, that's about it, so...
Yeah, it's five minutes up, yeah, thank you.
I said everything I needed to say.
But, do we have a question to this, yeah, we have some questions here.
Just a quick question, you mentioned on the, on the west side, there's no front yard parking.
Exactly.
But on the east side?
There's a few.
Quite a few homes here.
Not quite a few, a few.
Yeah, I see that they are, they do have front yard parking.
Some do, but that's, because no one parks on that, it's a one-way street. You can only park on one side.
So there's no, nobody's got front yard parking on the west side, but they do on the east side?
South of Fur, they do, there's one, sorry, yes, there's one, because I think it's a mutual, so two cars. But that's, that's south of Fur, and that's kind of a different community.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it?
There's any other question, oh, yeah, we still have questions, don't go.
Thanks, yeah, maybe I'm just not understanding the factual situation, you're saying there are two, sorry, two car parking spaces behind thirty-four in the rear?
Yes, there is.
And that, where's their access, like, I didn't see a lane.
In the driveway, the mutual driveway between thirty-two and thirty.
Between, sorry, thirty-two and thirty.
Thirty-two and thirty.
I see, okay. All right.
But it, it only goes to thirty-two and thirty, though, it doesn't go to thirty-four, right?
No, but the backyard is all open, well, it's all parking.
It's all parking.
So when they have the units there, each unit had a parking spot, somehow they lost one. So at thirty-four, there are two spots, and at thirty-two, there is one spot in the back. But he has to go past, he has to go through thirty-two to get to the parking for thirty-four.
With the sketch that's on the, on the monitor at the moment, I, I see that, it's okay, I, I understand.
Okay.
That right-of-way is, thank you.
But the current proposal, they, they do not propose any parking for number thirty-four, they only have parking.
Well, the only parking is to take away parking from the street so they can access their garage. Also, the way that people park on the street, there is going to be times where he's not even... Also, the way that people park on the street, there's going to be times where he's not even going to be able to access his garage parking because people are going to be parked too close.
Okay.
Just another quick question. The existing number thirty-four.
Yeah, yeah.
The proposed garage is supposed to be. Right now, there's a parking pad right in front of it, and there's a curb cut.
No, there is not.
That's what it seems from.
He wants a curb cut. There is no curb cut.
I don't know if I'm, what I'm looking at, but I'm looking at the Google Street Map view, and it seems to show that there's a parking pad.
Nope.
I think that's across the road.
Is this the one across? Oh, okay. Oh, I'm looking at the wrong one. Thank you.
I can tell you, I've lived there forty years, there's no curb cut in front of his house. We would all like a curb cut. We would all love personal parking. We have not been able to get it because it's against the bylaws. And if we all get it, then nobody has parking.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Do we have the next speaker?
Through the chair to the audience, just confirming, nobody else here in person to speak to this item? Item twelve? Okay, so we'll move to the online speaker, thank you. Sandra, you've unmuted. Sandra, can you hear us?
Yes, I'm here simply as a neighbor and an observer of this hearing. I do not have anything to present.
Okay. Do we have her name and address?
Through the chair, it sounds like you're just observing Sandra?
That's correct. I'm at thirty-eight Fernwood Park Avenue.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So there's no more registered speakers to this item?
Thank you. All right, so. Back to the agent. Can you, can you address the issues that have been raised?
Yes, absolutely. A couple of things I just wanted to say. How thirty-three, further across the street, uses the garage, whether it's for storage or vehicle release?
Irrelevant, that's their choice how they use it. I also just want to say that some stuff was raised about removing the one spot. Yes, it will be removing one spot through the curb cut, but it will also be adding an additional spot, one in the garage and one in front of the garage. The actual distance, if we could bring up the side elevation, please? Just zoom in on one of the sides. So the distance from the sidewalk itself to the actually proposed main front wall, that's the existing. If we could go to the new, please? And I'm going to also tie this into also what one of the neighbors spoke about, the height and the built form. That's perfect right there. So the left side of the screen is the front. So I didn't really touch on this in my presentation because there's really no variance associated with it, but I will briefly touch on it now because it was brought up by one of the neighbors. The left side of the screen is the front. The third floor has been recessed ten point zero four meters or thirty-two feet eleven from the sidewalk itself. So in terms of what somebody would actually see walking along Fernwood, this would present itself as a two-story dwelling. The really diminishing returns of what we would see as we're looking up, again, being ten meters or thirty-two feet eleven, you're not going to see that proposed third floor from the street. But again, keeping in mind that that is permitted. That height, all of the main wall heights, everything is permitted as per the zoning bylaw, similar to the rear, and it's been set in one point four meters as per the multiplex bylaw that permits it to exceed the main wall height, again, provided the overall height is zoning bylaw compliant. So in terms of what you'll see from the front and the rear, it is entirely zoning bylaw compliant. The last thing I would like to address from this is, again, going back to the removing one parking space, but really adding two. One which would be in front of the garage and one would be the portion from the garage to the sidewalk. That distance from the proposed front garage door to the sidewalk is four point eight three meters or essentially fifteen feet ten. Ample room to park a vehicle in front of it. So again, the thought of removing one space, again, to accommodate two, it's a little bit of a chicken and an egg where if we don't provide parking, then we often hear from neighbors, well, you're not providing any parking on a multiplex. Where do you expect people to park it? It's a struggle with these multiplexes as we move through this over time. In terms of the proposed front yard landscaping, again, I just want to stress, we're point zero five square meters below what the zoning bylaw requires. There is no request for any porches, as one of the neighbors spoke to. I also just want to speak a couple of other things. Number fifty-two on the same side of the street does have a curb cut, so just if you did want to look, there is a curb cut located on this side of the street to the north at fifty-two. Lastly, in terms of the, well, two more things. If we can go back to the revised site plan, that distance that is being enlarged is now seventeen feet four inches from the revised location of the curb cut for number thirty-four to the existing curb cut at thirty-two. The typical City of Toronto spot is five point six meters by two point six. That five point six essentially translates to eighteen foot six. I can tell you, a typical pickup truck is about fifteen feet six long. So in terms of the viability of that spot, short of having a very large, almost airport limousine, you're really going to be able to fit basically any vehicle within that spot. Just again, to go back to the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw provision, and I think this is also relevant, as you'll, you know, committee, I don't often speak of a lack of a staff report. I think it is indicative in this application. Now, we are here for the second time without a negative staff report. And I would also note, the first application had no negative staff report from transportation or planning. So going back to that intent and purpose of the variance, of variance number one, again, does not have anything to do with the elimination of a vehicle parking spot. That intent and purpose is specifically related to amassing. And I would put before the committee that with this being a semi-detached dwelling, the massing of this presents itself as, again, a dwelling well in excess of that seven point five meter frontage, seven point six meter frontage. I would also, lastly, like to just note, generally on that seven point six two meter frontage, you're going to have about a point nine meter setback on each side. That point nine meter setback and nine point nine meter at the one point eight really gets us closer to where we are at around that six meter, five point eight meter. So again, even that massing, as it would fit on the dwelling, as we know, this dwelling is essentially lot line to lot line, that massing is very similar. That's what I have to say, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any question to the African? No? Okay, now we're in committee.
Thank you.
Who would like to start?
If I may just add a couple of, if we're in committee, just a couple of observations. When it comes to the integral garage in the driveway and the curb cut, there are a couple of ways of looking at it. If there was no garage.
Through the chair, sorry, we're just receiving some technical difficulties at the moment. If you can just hold on for one moment while we try to resume. Okay, through the chair, it appears we are still live on YouTube, so the committee can proceed.
Proceed with the, yeah. Okay, please with the.
Thank you. So the observations I was just referring to is that the, having an integral garage in the driveway, the pad in the front of the driveway to the garage, one way to look at it is if there was no garage, somebody'd have to park on the street. And so the idea that a curb cut would remove a parking space on that side, I think is a little moot because you're replacing your curb cut with a parking space. It's just that the owner of that particular house won't have to be looking for a spot on the street. They already have one. That's one way to look at it. Plus, if you've got the driveway, that's another space. The issue of this front yard soft landscaping, if this is approved and there's a driveway, that one of the conditions would be that that driveway be permeable. So that's a bit of a mitigation factor. The only other thing I can see is that there's, at the rear yard, there's a deck and there's probably overlook on the north side, so there'd be a privacy screen requirement. That's the only, those are my observations.
I like to add my, actually, I do not have any problem with most of the whole proposal if it's on the other side of the street. I do have a lot of problem with the integral garage on this side of the street because when you look at it, I look at it in a very different way that it, on this side, really, when you look at the whole street, I go through the whole street. The, it's what do you call the right side where this house is, is all street parking. And most of the integral, uh, uh, front yard parking is on the other side. They had a driveway before, but after the severance, number twenty-four is cut off from their driveway, and that's why they proposed this integral garage. And by doing so, they want to get back their parking with, on the, on the expenses of almost reconfigure the whole street parking pattern. And I have a lot of difficulties. If it's on that side, I think it's a very good proposal. I do not have any problem. But I really do not think that to disrupt or to change the configuration of the street parking pattern is something that I can support.
Through the chair, apologies, sorry to interrupt. We are having technical difficulties. We are going to have to take a break to resume those.
I have to repeat what I said before.
So please, everyone, thank you for your patience. We have IT attempting to resolve this issue. Thank you, please hold on, we will resume as soon as we can.
Okay.
Fifty-five, he said, fifty-two, I think he said that.
So I guess you're not able to put up this guy.
[Music]
So we were in the middle of the study. Do I need to review what I said?
A little bit, yeah.
Oh, okay. I, my, I was just saying that if, I would, I think this is a very good proposal because on the other side of the street. And I go through the whole street, the current parking pattern is really, they just, if they don't create another curb cut, we'll get the whole new curb cut on the whole street on that side. And I do have difficulty with the integral garage because on this side of the street. And this only resulted before- Well, they did have a driveway before the severance. And only as a result of the severance. So it is a compensation for that, as I said, that result. And then they want to get, put it in the front. And I do not really think that it's a good location for the integral garage. That's my, that's my.
Yeah, I agree with you, EM. I think, I think the west side of the street is fundamentally different than the east. And I think that adding this is not desirable. And as the neighbor noted, everyone would like one of these. But I think that if that actually happened, it would really change the nature of this street. And I think it would make it a lot less attractive. I don't necessarily have issues with the remainder of the variances. I think that they're all relatively minor and almost technical. But yeah, for the reasons you stated as well, I think I would be, I would not approve variance one and then also variance two, just because that's related with it. But then I would be supportive of three, four, and five.
Three, four, and five. Okay. All right, so any other comments?
I just to add to what Mr. Reed was just saying. And I think in my conversation with my colleagues is now, I think that makes a lot of sense. The rest of the project is fine.
Yes.
But it's variance one, and it's so, two is associated with one. So it'll at least allow for the project to continue. There'll be more basement space without a garage. But yeah, I think that might be the way to go.
All right, so is, do we have a motion on the floor?
Sure, I'll make that into a motion. For the reasons discussed, I think that the integral garage is not a desirable element of this. So I would move that we approve variances three, four, and five and deny variances one and two.
Okay, deny.
If I may, just add a friendly item. There's a deck at the rear, which has, I believe, northern side overlook.
Okay, so north-
Privacy screen on the north side of the rear deck.
Yes, that's great.
Okay, yes, no, okay, north side of rear deck. Uh, it's like, oh, sorry, on the ground floor deck, do we have the same ground floor deck? We, ground floor deck. Okay. So that's a motion. Is it clear to everyone? And then, yeah, we, it's proposed to approve variance three, four, or five and deny one and two and have a privacy screen on the north edge of the rear deck on the ground floor. All in favor? Oh, do we have a second?
Second, I'll second that.
Yeah, second, by Ms. Wyatt. And then, all in favor? All in favor, yeah. Approve, thank you. Okay, now we are on item number thirteen. It's two six one Minora Drive. It's to alter the existing two-story dwelling by constructing a rear two-story addition with a cover ground level terrace. And we are also, receive a survey site plan, floor plan, and elevations. Five photographs of the tree on the property and cover letter from the agent. We also receive a position from twenty done drum questions. That's all we have received on this item.
To you, Madam Chair, we have the agent online and no other speakers.
Okay, thank you.
It's Lauren Rose.
You're unmuted.
Yes, it's Lauren Rose, three eighty-eight Spadina Road. So this is a simple application to do an addition to an existing house. The only variance we're requesting is FSI of point seven eight. I will note, planning was contacted. They had no comments because it fits into other development in the area. And further to note, the opposition letter is actually interesting because she has no objections to the addition. She's just concerned there's rats in the area and excavation is going to make the rats come out.
Yeah, so maybe you should make sure that won't happen. Okay, any question to the-
No, thanks, Chair.
So, yeah, it's like a straightforward application. Do you, we are ready to discuss this item. Do you have anything else you want to address our panel?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we're in committee now, okay. Who wants to take this on, simple ones? Yes.
I know it's the opposition really was to the construction and the difficulties that arise sometimes at that time. But otherwise, Madam Chair, I see it as meeting the test. This is a small increase in FSI. So I'm prepared to move that we approve this application without condition.
Yes, and with second? Yeah, Ms. Lee, second? All in favor? It's a pull unanimously, thank you, yeah. Okay, for item fourteen is twenty-six Elgin Avenue. This is to alter the existing three-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a one-story side, a west side addition, which will contain one parking space within the garage and a garden room to the rear of this garage. And we receive a survey site plan, floor plan, elevation, twenty-four photographs of this property and a presentation material from the agent and staff report from community planning and also a support. And seven signature petition in support is twenty, twenty-one, twenty-eight, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-four, thirty-six Elgin Street. And we are ready for the-
To you, Madam Chair, we have the agents here in person and no other speakers.
Do we have no more, no more, oh, okay, good. So we do, give us your first and last name and your address, please, yeah.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. Sean McGaffey, WND Associates, forty-seven Roselawn Avenue, Toronto, M four R one E five.
Thank you. They are seeking for only one variance, so, and- Any question? I don't think we need a presentation from you, but since you're here, you would like to address the panel on some specific, like, issues?
Nothing in particular. I submitted some presentation materials, which perhaps you've had a chance to review. It's a very straightforward application, I think. One variance relating to the side yard setback of the proposed garage. The owner is here with me today, along with the architect and the builder. They've consulted with the immediate neighbor to the west, who's in support of the application. It's been reviewed by Heritage, it's been reviewed by Planning. They have no objections to the condition from Planning, so-
I do have one question for you, though. The committee planning report, they requested we will tie it to the site plan.
Yes, yeah, we're absolutely fine with that, just to make sure that someone in the future can't apply that zero meter to the entire length of the site.
Yes, yes, all right, yes.
Just one quick question. What is a garden room?
So-
On my ignorance, but it-
This is a heritage home in the annex heritage, East Annex Heritage Conservation District. There is a, on the site today, there is a small room that looks out onto the side yard garden, basically behind where the garage is proposed to be. That garden room is being expanded slightly to the, towards the west property line. That's already underway as part of a building permit application. There's no variance associated with that. And the reason that the garage is where it is in this case is because to preserve that garden room that was part of the original home. So that's, yeah.
It's almost like a greenhouse attached to the building, historically speak?
Yeah, I think maybe not so much a greenhouse, but a sunroom, a room with a lot of glazing around the outside.
It's the afternoon tea.
Yeah, afternoon tea.
You can get a, you can get a, on page ten of the presentation, you can get a view of the current consideration down the side.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay, any other questions? Okay, no question, we are in committee now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Who wants to take this on? It's a nice project.
Sure, I think this is a very straightforward application and minimal request. There's only one condition attached to that, and that is from planning that the project be built in accordance with drawing a one-point-zero of the site plan. And I think that's the only condition. So I'd like to move approval.
Yes. Okay, second, all in favor of that condition? All in favor? It's a pull. Thank you, thank you for coming. All right, so fifteen is deferred. And then now we move to sixteen, it's forty-eight Rhodes Road Avenue. This is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a ground floor south side bay window addition and a third floor addition. And there will be one residential dwelling unit on this lot. We receive a copy of the survey site plan, four plan elevations, three photographs of the property and also decisions affecting the property and Albert's report and a presentation material from the agent. We also receive a letter of concern from Sarah and Paul Davids, seventy-two Craven Road. We are ready for the African, yeah.
To you, Madam Chair, we have the agent online and no other speakers.
Yeah. And we are seeking two variances on this one.
Shahid, you're unmuted.
Thank you. My name is Shahid Danavatian. I'm from one three zero forward by an avenue, Unit one, Toronto.
Okay, thank you. You do not have any oppositions. Let me check with the panel whether they want to have a presentation from you.
Sure.
I, yeah, we do not require presentation? Okay, I have one small question for the- Okay, uh, I have one small question, uh, to, um, uh, for the FSI. Do you?
Yes.
The existing one, that you, yeah.
Yes, the existing one is point seventy-four.
Point seventy-four, okay, thank you, so. All right, so any other questions, and are we ready, and, yeah, we, you have question, yeah?
Questions for you, yeah. Just a couple of questions. So this, the structure that you wish to have legalized, it is a garage, I take it at the bottom, and?
Uh, there's no legal. The legalization, we are not going for any legalization, basically.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh. Oh, we're on sixteen, sorry, I was looking at fourteen, uh, fifteen, that's why. Okay, I'm sorry, I take that back.
That's right.
Absolutely, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
I got a shock, actually, I said, now where did this garage come from?
Just testing your heart.
Thank you, sir.
So, uh, what, what about the, uh, the people sending their concern, um?
Yes, uh, the, the lady who has sent.
You addressed to that briefly?
Yes, sure, I can do that. The lady wants, uh, the, I'll give a, I'll give a quick, a little bit of understanding of this proposal, that will, that will help the lady to even understand where we are going with this. So, truthfully, a home over here is very narrow. A house is just fourteen feet, ten inches. That is why we have, the, the planning that we are doing, if you look at the plan, it's all coming out as a railway compartment of planning. So, there's a lot of wastage in the, in, in the hallways and the corridors that we are getting. So that's why the FSI is going up. But you have to remember one thing, that the existing FSI is point seventy-four, and we are asking one-point-zero-four. Now, one-point-zero-six Rhodes Avenue has been given one-point-eleven FSI. Two-thirty-two Rhodes Avenue has been given one-point-one-five FSI. Forty-three Rhodes Avenue has been given one-point-six-eight FSI, and this is for the same reason, because everybody's house is really very narrow. So it is very difficult to design a proper house, and especially with the growing families that we have, and including multi-generation families staying in the same house, we need some more areas. That's, that's where we are going with. And, uh, the front of, the important D D, the front of the house is unchanged. The height of the front remains as it is today. At the rear, the height increases by four feet, four inches only. So we are not changing the street scape, and the overall height of the, the house stays in the limit of the zoning. We are not going beyond the zoning limits for the overall height. This is just for the sidewall, basically. And as you will see, that this particular sidewall is not hurting anybody with respect to shadows or whatever. And the lady who has come up with the concern is staying on a street behind and seven homes away. So definitely the shadow is not going to come to her house, hundred and ten percent on that. So the only variance that after that we are looking at is, that is for the main wall height, by which is, which we are increasing by half a meter, and I, I'm, I'm pretty sure that should be okay. And, uh, kindly be considered by the committee to approve as such. And we are not reducing the green space at the back, we are not extending the building at the back. So the green space is perfectly conserved, we have a good thirty-five-foot, uh, backyard, we are conserving that. The kids play very well, the neighbor kids come, neighboring kids come over there, everybody is happy with the backyard, and it is totally green over there.
Thank you, all right, any more questions? No more, now we are in committee, this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right, so. Mr. Byatt?
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
I, I just feel compelled that I should perhaps, uh, take this one, uh, after making a mistake. Yeah, I think this is a very straightforward, um, uh, request, and the, uh, the variances requested a minor in nature. And, and I think the point about, uh, the nature of this, homes like these. This is one way, or perhaps the only way, that, uh, homeowners can actually expand their structures and not have to relocate somewhere else. So for those reasons, I'd like to move approval, I don't believe.
Don't think so, no?
No.
Yeah, any, yeah, no, yeah, none, so I'd move approval, no conditions.
Second? Mr. McKay, second, all in favor of no conditions? All in favors, uh, approved, unanimously, thank you. So we, um, we, uh, item, um, the seventeen is being deferred, right? And, uh, we are on item number eighteen, which is one-three-three-zero, Dundas Street West. This is to alter the existing two-story mixed-use building by converting the second-floor, uh, residential unit into an additional eating establishment. This is currently an, uh, one eating estab- establishment on the ground floor, and will be maintained and unaltered. The copy of, uh, we have, receive a copy of survey site plan for plans and elevations, and three photographs of the property, and also email corresponding from transportation engineering, and a staff report on community planning. And we receive three forms, uh, three letters of support, uh, from one, uh, thirteen-twenty-four, thirteen-twenty-six, twenty, thirty, twenty-eight, and thirty, thirteen-forty-two, and twelve-seventy-eight Dundas Street West. We are ready for the applicant or agent.
To you, Madam Chair, we have the agent online and no other speakers. Edward, you're unmuted.
Lee, architect here, on behalf of the owners.
Yes. Can you tell, can, give us your first name, last name, and your address, please?
Yes, uh, name is Edward Lee.
Okay.
Uh, address is six Argyle Street.
Yes. And, um, we, we actually have received, um, a late, uh, staff report that they stated, maybe the staff can bring it up, uh, in the supplemental, um, material, that they, they have asked us to refuse. Or, or defer, yeah, and, uh, they, they have some, some issues with variance number one. Have you seen the report?
Yes, I, I had the opportunity to speak with the planner, um, after the planning report was issued last minute. And, uh, we would like to move forward with the application being heard today.
Okay, so, uh, what was the result of the discussion? Did they, did the planning, committee planning change their stance, or they?
Uh, well, I can, I can just jump right into that part of my presentation. The concerns from planning staff were, um, that they needed more time to consider how they could, uh, word a condition to, um, provide sound mitigation. The primary concern is that a second-floor commercial use adjacent to residential dwelling units would be disruptive from a sound separation, uh, perspective. And after discussing with them, I, I have a couple of arguments to, to make, uh, um, in response to those concerns. But, um, at the end of the day, the planner does not really object to what we're proposing. Uh, they just requested the deferral so that they could internally, uh, discuss to come up with some kind of wording to address the sound mitigation concerns.
About mainly the, uh, because of the adjacent to a residential unit, do I, they want to.
Yes.
That some, some measures are taken to.
Yes, yes.
To factor, yeah, okay.
Just a question, perhaps, do you have any ideas about mitigating the sound?
Yes, um, so I, I, I did have a short presentation to make, uh, I mean, I'm happy to.
Yeah, please, go ahead, we like to hear that, yeah. Start with the cloud for.
Yeah, okay, I, I'll, I'll be quick. I mean, just introduce the, the, the restaurant, Imanishi Restaurant at thirteen-thirty Dundas. It's celebrating its tenth year in the neighborhood. If not familiar with Imanishi, um, they're well-loved by the neighborhood, and is one of the original establishments on Dundas, um, that has led to success of many others that have followed on the street. The owner has support of both adjacent neighbors, as we were very aware that this proposal to convert the second floor, um, you know, we wanted to make sure that both adjacent neighbors were supportive, so we have those letters on file. Um, and there were no letters of objection or concern from residential neighbors behind. Uh, everybody has been very supportive of Imanishi being here. Also worth noting that the, uh, one of the owners has been the tenant upstairs for nine years. And the owners of Imanishi actually purchased the building in twenty-twenty-four to ensure that Imanishi will, this will remain their home for a long time. So the second-floor dwelling unit, which was owner-occupied, um, has recently been vacated, uh, after the owner welcomed their first child and decided to leave the apartment. So no tenant is being evicted, um, and the unit is now vacant, awaiting approval of this minor variance for the proposed second-floor, um, expansion. I'll just jump right into planning's concerns. I've been before committee, uh, over the past few years for similar second-floor commercial conversions on Dundas West. La Palma, eight forty-nine Dundas, Patwa at seven ninety-four Dundas, Grapewiches at twelve forty-seven Dundas, and most recently, uh, Turberna, the former Paris Paris Restaurant, at eleven sixty-one Dundas. All of these addresses were approved for minor variances associated with commercial floor space index to convert second-floor area into established, uh, eating establishments. All of these second-floor uses remain associated with the original ground-floor restaurants. Similarly, on Ossington, there have been many contentious, um, hearings before committee, um, for conversion of second-floor uses. I just wanted to use that as an example, that on Ossington, the key difference is that there is a site-specific zoning restriction for restaurant uses above ground floor. For Dundas, um, there is no restriction to second-floor uses. And I actually spoke to the planner and illustrated an example of how this difference is key. You know, if the property at thirteen-thirty was a longer lot, or the building was shorter, it actually would be possible to propose an as-of-right second-floor restaurant, um, that would comply with the FSI. So, obviously, the, the reason that we're before committee for this minor variance is that the FSI is above what, um, Dundas permits. But it's not specifically because of the restaurant use being proposed on the second floor. That's an important distinction between Dundas and Ossington. And then, so to jump into the, um, technical aspects of planning's concerns about sound mitigation, the, I mean, first and foremost, um, I've done many of these applications, and this is the first time that planning staff has ever expressed concerns for adjacent commercial CR zone residents. It's always the residential zone neighbors, um, you know, behind the laneway, um, that are usually the ones who are, are most vocal about these applications. So I actually took the opportunity to speak to the planning planner about this, and where this concern is coming from. And, um, they admitted that they would, you know, like to better understand the impacts of converting a second-floor residential use into a commercial use. And I responded by saying that, you know, as a licensed architect, um, you know, that we'll be preparing and submitting building permit applications for this proposal, should we be approved today. I am responsible for ensuring that not only fire separation requirements, but also STC, sound separation requirements, for any assemblies that involve dwelling units, must comply with OBC requirements. And this often includes, you know, the requirement for acoustic sound insulation, resilient channels, to upgrade existing floor and wall assemblies to comply with code. And just like converting, um, a, a ground floor or second-floor use, the horizontal assembly has to be reviewed by Toronto Building to ensure that the adjacencies meet fire and sound separation requirements. The same, uh, same applies for vertical separations between adjacent units, as in this case.
Thank you.
Yeah. Oh, is it already up? Okay.
I think it's clear, we, we are today.
Yeah, that's, so, yes, that's essentially my, my, my rebuttal is that, um, I, I believe that all of the concerns that planning staff have will be addressed through the building permit application process. But the owner is open to adding any additional sound mitigation if planning, uh, if, if committee members feel that it's appropriate to, uh, word that in a way as a condition to, um, hopefully an approval.
Thank you, yes, uh, thank you, yes, you have some questions here, please, yes.
Thanks for your explanation, that was helpful. So your, in summary, your main point is that the building, uh, the building permit process and the building code, because you're adjacent to residential units, will, will address the sound mitigation component of this, is that correct?
Yes, correct, and, uh, if, if I may, one very important, um, example I pointed out is, this building, I, I know, because I've investigated, is a double or maybe even triple-brick demising wall condition between, between, uh, properties. If this were, say, a Victorian-era, you know, um, wood-framed structure with, uh, a wood, wood party wall between the units, obviously, concerns about sound mitigation are, are serious in, in that specific case. And Toronto Building would not allow a building permit to be issued without a wood-framed wall significantly being upgraded in construction to meet the STC requirements for a restaurant adjacent to a dwelling unit. Um, and in this case, I know for sure that we have at least double or triple-brick construction with framed walls and drywall on either side. So I believe we already comply with the fire and sound requirements. But obviously, if we were deficient, it would be my responsibility to ensure that we propose additional compensating construction to bring that into compliance. So my point to planning staff was that this should be a case-by-case, building-by-building condition, and I don't see how planning staff can come up with a general recommendation that would apply to every building, because every building's existing construction will be different. Which is why thankfully, we have the Ontario Building Code, which is quite black and white about the, you know, minimum STC fifty requirement whenever a dwelling unit is adjacent to a commercial use. And that applies for demising walls, vertical separations, as it does for horizontal separations between a second-floor apartment and a ground-floor restaurant.
All right, thanks a lot.
Yeah.
May I just, a quick one? So just to, to alleviate the situation, because I think this is a very, um, supportable application. Just to address the sound issue, can you think of any wording that you might put in that it could be a condition to say that, you know, um, the agent will be responsible or for, for sound mitigation, some?
Yes, I saw, I actually tried to propose this to planning staff. I mean, in my view, it should be technical in nature, so I'm not sure how.
Sorry, I think I should interrupt here. I do not think that we are mandated to do that, because, uh, that's a minimum, that the building code is minimum requirement for this sound separations and fire separation and all that. Despite of what we, what condition we put in, they have to meet that. And usually, by meeting that, it, it, it is, it is acceptable level. And whether there's the extra thing they want to do is, is, we cannot, yeah, we cannot really regulate that.
So in essence, it's a, technical part will take care of the issue?
Yes, yes, yeah, because anything that, uh, the building could take years to come up with those, those conditions or the regulation. If we're going to put another, just, we make up some conditions here. We do not know whether it is, uh, helping the building code, or whether, I think we'll leave it like that.
And through the charity members, it would have to be to the satisfaction of someone. And in this case, we don't have any, uh, direction or any conditions from departments at this time. Planning was requesting deferral, um, they didn't specify those details that the agent said, but the agent had indicated it was due to sound and noise, so, uh, that's for members to consider. You know, if it's deferral and planning may or may not come up with a condition in future, or refusal or approval, those, those are your options.
Yeah, I don't, I don't suggest to say to satisfy any department, because I, I believe building code, they will have to comply with that. And then, to, to me, that is enough, uh, enforcement there. So, do, do, any other suggest, uh, any other question?
No, thanks.
Okay, uh, we are in committee now, okay, all right.
Oh, yeah, we've, I, we've had a couple of files that have been kind of like this before, where the, the concern has been the noise transference, and, um, to the deputy, Deputy Secretary Treasurer's comment, yeah, I, we, I think we even have put forward conditions before related to. forward conditions before related to sound, but that's the issue that there's no one who can sign off on it, right?
Exactly. That's who's going to sign off on it.
I think the building code takes care of that, and I, I can't see planning getting to a condition that would be, that would be actually helpful to the process. I, Zaher said he's supportive of this application. I think it makes a lot of sense. And I, I guess we just put faith in the building code, but yeah, I'm supportive without condition.
Yes.
That wasn't a motion. I think, I don't know if other people had something to say.
No, Mr. McKay. Yeah, Mr. McKay.
Said very well, I think.
Okay, thanks, Gary. Yeah, but I, I under, I understand planning's concern, and that was my concern too, but I think the agent did a good job at explaining the process to us. So I move that we, despite planning's memo, I move that we approve this application without condition.
Yes. Ms. McKay, second? Okay. Second, and all in favor? Approve unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Have we finished this?
One more?
Oh, this question? Okay, we still have one more.
Nineteen.
It's nineteen.
Sorry?
Oh, and three, yes. We, we, we go back to, we circle back to three. Item number nineteen is two fifty Lambston Avenue. This is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a front second floor addition with a terrace and a rear two-story addition with a second floor addition, a second floor terrace. We receive a copy of survey site plan, floor plans, elevations, and a revised site plan, and also a red line public notice and a red line zoning notice. And we have six photographs of the property and a couple letter from the agent and decision affecting this property, the property. And we have a staff report from community planning. And we are ready for the agent.
To you, Madam Chair, we have the agent online and no other speakers.
Okay. So since they have made some revision.
Thank you.
One minute?
Yep.
Thank you. Once again, my name is Shahid Danavati, and I am from one three zero four Woodbine Avenue, Unit One, Toronto.
Yes. And let's go through your revision first and then have that in record.
So, yeah, basically, the Ms. Neha from the, the planning department, she requested us to add more green space over there to the existing interlocks over there. So we did that, and we removed the two variances as such. The first variance that we have, where the existing lot coverage is fifty-nine point sixty-three, and we are just proposing sixty-three point twenty-one, is just an increase of three point five eight percent. We request the committee humbly to accept this.
No, that revision is you deleting variance two and three, right? That's, that's.
That's right. So we have given, we have added the green space and we have deleted the.
Understand, yeah. So, so do we need a presentation on this one? Yeah. Thank you. We, we do not need a presentation from you. Do we have questions for him? No? And, and there's only one mention. We receive a staff report requesting that the proposal is substantially in accordance with site plan.
Yes.
And also self-elevations. That's okay for you, right?
Absolutely okay. Absolutely okay.
Yeah, that's the condition. All right. So you have, we are ready to discuss this application. Do you have anything else you want to address the panel?
No, ma'am. I'll answer any question if you have any.
Okay, thank you. Now we're committed.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Sorry, just to the agent, does the purpose of application also need to be amended? The purpose speaks to a second floor terrace. Planning is tying you to the site plan to ensure the rear terrace remains a nonusable space?
Yes. That's committed on the plans as well.
So what is that area then being used for? Should we, should we delete the terminology of a terrace then?
Yes, it has to be known as a roof only.
So by constructing a front second floor addition, that's it?
So just a rear two-story addition?
Yes, ma'am.
Period? And, and we'll delete reference to second floor terrace?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. So amended purpose as well?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So, okay, we're in committee. Yep, please, Mr. By.
Sure, I'll, I'll take this one. Chair, I think again, with the revisions that, the amendments that have been introduced, this is a very straightforward application, easily supportable. We have one variance in front of us. So I'd like to move approval of this application with planning conditions in place. That's about it. As amended, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Reed, second? All in favor? All in favor, approve those conditions and amended agenda?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. So we're going to give a try for item number three. It, I think that is seventy Cambridge Street. Let's, if we, we do not get them this time, we're going to defer it.
Through the chair, committee members have the option of hearing the application if they wish, so making a decision either if you wish to defer, you can do so, or you can also hear the application.
We can also hear it.
If you wish. And yes, for the record, there are no registered speakers for this item, and we will try for the fourth time to get the agent online.
Yes, please.
Walter, you have unmuted?
Walter, are you there? We are now hearing item three. This is our fourth attempt for the agent. Walter? Okay, through you, Madam Chair. After numerous attempts all morning, the agent is not able to connect. One, one second, staff is trying. One last option here. Bear with us one moment.
Should we just defer this?
Um, no, let's discuss that. I would like to hear it, actually.
I thought I muted. I called him, it's different number, but I thought I muted it.
Gordon, can you hear us?
Walter, it's showing you are online, but we are still unable to hear you.
Walter? Can you hear us?
Hello?
Okay.
Oh. I can finally.
Oh, okay.
Uh, one moment. Thank you. And I don't know what kind of technical gremlins we've had today, but this is, it's good to finally get through.
I think I have.
Can you hear me?
The purpose, but I can repeat it quickly, is to convert, it's a twenty-two story apartment building. They will want to convert the lounge area into a additional residential dwelling. The total dwelling, residential dwelling will be as two seventy-six. And we have received, we, we have read this, so they're looking for just one variance.
Correct.
Yeah, do you, can you tell us your name and your first and last name and your address for the record, please?
Yes, it's Walter Buchko, B U C H K O. I'm with G Griffiths and Associates at five nine one Brant Street, Burlington, Ontario. And we're acting as an agent of the owner, which is Westdale Construction Company Limited for the apartment building complex at fifty and seventy of Cambridge Avenue.
Okay, thank you. And let's see, you do have some oppositions, but they are not here to speak, but I will see whether we require, we want to have presentation from you. Oh, we have questions. We have, we do have questions. Okay, let's go ahead with the questions, please. Yeah, Mr. McKay, please.
Hi. Just with respect to then your, your closing the former lounge space, is lounge space going to be provided somewhere else in the building?
There are presently on the ground floor two lounge spaces. One lounge space has been utilized since the building was originally constructed. The second lounge space, which is the one that we're presently looking at converting into apartment complex unit, has not been used for well over a decade. It's, uh, it has been used as the landlord maintenance storage space only and, and has not been used, as I say, for well over a decade. But on the ground floor across from this existing lounge space that we're looking at converting, there is an existing lounge that has been and continues to be used as that.
All right, so that, that particular space you're saying has been used by, sort of by the landlord for storage, et cetera, so really has not been, it's not, not been an area where tenants have been congregating.
Correct. It was intended that way way back in the sixties when the apartment complex was used or was originally built. And I don't know if early on it was used, quite possibly, but for quite some time it has been fully abandoned and unoccupied.
And if we moved it to, to residential use, what's the approximate square footage?
Yeah. It was. It is. It's about seventy-three square meters. And again, with no increase to the ground floor area of the building as it was originally deemed as an occupied space, and it remains as such, so there would be no ground floor increase to the building with this conversion.
All right, thanks. Other members may have questions.
Yes. Actually, yeah, I, I, the confusion is that from your, all the opposition letters, they think, they, they're thinking that you're going to convert the area next to, right next to the main entrance or the elevator into this.
That's incorrect.
Yeah, I think that you, you saw the lack of communication to your tenants, because when I looked at all the opposition, it's that's what they are thinking about. And then I thought that was the case.
I can, yeah, I can understand how that could happen. And if you look at the submission made for our application, you see the area work at the back, and then you can see right beside the entrance an area called up as lounge. And that lounge area is hands-off, we have no intentions of, in any way affecting it at all.
Because I want, it's a communication problem, because the lounge, the tenants understand it's the lounge that being used as lounge now. The, the area that you're going to use to convert is that they, some people know that it's like a storage and workshop, so they do not know that was so-called also lounge. I think that's where the confusion is, and then you communicate clearly with the tenants, maybe it is, you will not get so much opposition.
We can certainly have that posted, that if there is any confusion on the space that was being addressed for this possible apartment conversion, it was not the space beside the entrance. It was the one to the rear that I'm guessing most apartment residents won't even know was a, a former lounge area. We could certainly have that posted and sent off to the, the residents of the building.
Yeah, if you post it also on your, on your floor plan, would you mind moving the area of work way off from the front lounge, because people do not see that pointer, I think.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
At the, in front of the elevator. That's what they, they worry.
Through the chair to members.
We could certainly do that.
Through the chair to the agent and members, should the purpose of application be amended or clarified at all? Maybe some additional language to better.
The existing works, work space or something, what do you call that? That, that is a space. What is the space that you're using it as like a repair and storage area, instead calling it lounge from the old drawing? Can we describe that better, so they know?
Uh, we certainly could if required, yes. I, I guess the wording is what it is, because that's what's on record with the city of Toronto as the original use for this room. And basically, it became an abandoned room in that it wasn't being used for that purpose. And just sort of as a leftover unabandoned, unabandoned room, became a catch-all or whatever. So it doesn't really have a defined use presently, other than just not being occupied, not really being used.
And through the chair to the agent, is there a better way to describe like rear or direction, like a room number?
Sure. Yep. Absolutely, we could do that.
Yeah.
Well, in, in the drawings, these are identified as existing vacant lounge, and they have numbers E one and E zero one.
Right, so perhaps the number that matches with the plan?
Yes.
To the agent? That's a question to you, to the agent, of how better to describe it, which room number we can use?
Well, we had an overall key plan drawing that showed the entire first floor. I think really graphically that, that shows the intent much better than a room number. We can assign a room number and that, but I don't think that would have a whole lot of meaning to tenants. Certainly, the overall floor plan showing the area and the other area that is not being touched as a lounge probably explains the intended area and the scope of work much better than a room number could. I'll defer to you. We could certainly do that if wished, but, but I think a plan as submitted, being a bit more clear, would certainly clear up any misunderstandings as far as which room we are speaking about.
We could tie it to the first floor key, key plan, I think.
And I just wondered, on the key plan, there's an indication, it says stall lounge. Are those two words together, is, is it referred to as a stall lounge?
The whole area was a lounge.
It's a stall number five, I think.
No, that's a stair.
Oh, stair number five.
Yeah, there's got nothing to do. Yeah, you, the key plan should be okay, but make it more, you know, distinct, then people will know. Yeah. And then you can say the existing lounge on the key plan, say unchanged or something.
Can we grant some wording here?
Hello, there's a question for you.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear that.
No, they, yeah, Ms. McKay, you can repeat your question.
I was just saying, could you assist us with some wording there, because we would like to, I think we'd like to avoid or take out the thing as the ground floor lounge, because people did react to that and it doesn't seem right. So what, what, what can we call this, this area? We look at the purpose again, and alter the existing twenty-two story at seventy Cambridge by converting. Can you help us here? Some wording?
Maybe I can, I can, I can suggest, I would suggest to convert the, this used lounge from grid line I to F, is it, I, I to F, to additional joint unit. As indicator on the key plan. Awesome.
Through the chair, not for the purpose, we wouldn't reference a, a plan in the purpose, but just is there a direction, like to the rear of the ground floor or a corner, west, east? Is there a direction we can use perhaps?
Absolutely. I know we could say the direction northeast, southwest, to which side of the elevators towards the rear of the building from the entrance. We certainly use wording like that, which would very much help clarify the exact area that was specifically referring to here.
Okay. Through the chair, can you repeat that slowly? So, what is the language?
It would be the rear of the building to the right side of the existing elevators and stairwell. The far side of the entrance corridor.
Okay. Instead of right, could you please use a direction?
Just want to make sure I get the orientation right.
East side.
To the west.
Is it number 50?
I thought it's the east side.
And this is for 70 Cambridge, not 50.
East side. I believe it's the east of the elevators.
Yeah.
And it's front and the north side of the building.
Okay. Yes. It is east of the elevator.
On the north side of the building.
Yeah. Yeah, that's good. I think we got, I think the tenants will be pleased to read that.
Yeah. I could certainly understand the concerns if they thought they're using, are losing an existing lounge area that they're presently using. And that was absolutely not the intention.
Okay. All right. So, any other questions? And we got the wording right? East side of the elevator and north side of the building. Okay. We are in committee now. Yeah. Please, yeah.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I think it's a fine proposal, especially considering this is... The photographs are very helpful in that it's clearly a disused area of the floor. And so, this is a good way to insert another unit. So, I will move approval of this application with the amended purpose to properly identify the area. And also, I'd like to tie it to the first floor key plan that identifies visually the area involved.
Yeah.
That's, that would be the motion.
Yes. I think that's very good. Yeah, Mr. McKay, second?
I would certainly second that motion here.
Yeah. All in favor with the amended agenda? Okay. All in favor? Approve. Thank you. With the two conditions.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Okay. All right. Now, we are joined for lunch, for a break.
Through you, Madam Chair. So, we will commence the afternoon session at 2:25 PM. 2:30? Okay. 2:30 PM. Okay. 2:30 PM. Thank you, everybody.
Please mute and turn off your cameras. Mute the room. Everything's off. muted. Okay. May I, may I please, email IT, the host name, that stuff in the chat that we need so they can review?